Peter, how they coming on your new overpass over there?
Pretty good.
Yeah, they are, really. That over, uh, long past road. It's coming along fine, lots of progress. The other part, it's not that different in their way, but they got a new company down there doing a very good job on direct tracking and around the...
At least you see progress. It was a long time we didn't see progress.
Right, wherever you are. Yeah, you know, when I was going to school there, so I worked for a company, I worked for a lot of different jobs. Anyway, once somebody decides to take a job, it's a construction company.
Can you call the meeting order, please?
Especially in the summer.
So if we could stand for a moment of silence in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Time Secretary, could we have the roll call, please?
Jamie Girardi.
Here.
Don Anderson.
Here.
Peter Hansel.
Roberto Sais.
Here.
Christopher Poole.
Here.
Chris Williams.
Here.
And Chairman Charles Gray.
Here.
And approval publication, please.
The items were published in the Tampa Bay Times on April 6, 2022.
Thank you very much. Do we have minutes?
Yeah, move approval of the minutes from the February 17 and April 7 meetings.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, so before we get started, anybody who plans to give testimony or come up and speak today, if you please, raise your right hand, stand, raise your right hand and be sworn.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give as a truce to help you, God? Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I'd like to welcome everyone. We're the Planning Commission, appointed by the county commissioners, and we meet twice monthly. We serve as a local planning agency. We hold public hearings and transmit to the Board of County Commissions recommendations on comprehensive plan amendments, land development code amendments, rezonings and conditional use requests. Planning Commission is the final decision-making body for special exceptions, certain appeals, variance requests, and certain alternative standard requests. However, final decisions may be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. Anyone who's in opposition to any development code amendment, rezoning, conditional use, or any item where the Planning Commission transmits a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, it's important for you to attend the appropriate county commission meeting. For those of you who are not familiar with the procedures that we follow here in these meetings, we have three segments. First is the continuance, and it's been our custom to grant continuances when requested by the staff or the applicant unless there are continuing circumstances. We also have consent items where we have received no objection from the staff or letters or contact from the public. And those items will go through one at a time. If there's something on consent that you'd like to have heard or discuss today, raise your hand when we talk about it, and we'll pull it off consent. It'll go into the regular items, which those are the items that we will fully discuss and ask questions about. We'll have a presentation by the applicant and follow-up and questions from the audience. Applicants will typically have three minutes to make their presentations, and the citizens will have three minutes to state their concerns. Following the presentation, the applicant may have five minutes unless requested all time in advance to respond to those questions. And if there are, if anybody here has a telephone, and I'm sure a lot of you do, this is a good time to silence it. And before we start the regular meeting, we want to open a meeting for public comment or items that are not appearing on today's agenda. Is there anybody here that's here to speak on something not on the agenda today? See no one. Okay. I think we're ready.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Planning Commission members. Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development. We're going to go over the agenda, however, I do believe that we do have several items that will be pulled. So the first item is PC 3, PDD 227557. We do have someone who has registered to speak on that item.
Okay.
The next item is PC 4, PDD 227609, and there are several folks who have registered to speak on that item here in person, and there is someone who is for that item online as well, on WebEx.
Okay.
So if we can move on to item PC 5, which is on your consent agenda.
Okay.
PC 5 is PDD 227603, and it's in the name of MB Real Estate Leasing LLC Softwind. It's for a rezoning, change in zoning from AC Agricultural District to an I-2 General Industrial Park District. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval. I do want to mention that there is a discrepancy between the name on the agenda item, which is MB Real Estate, that is the correct name, and what it was advertised as, and that's MR Real Estate. And I believe you may want to listen to the applicant who will state that. I think David's going to say that.
Mr. Chair, I'm fine with it proceeding as long as we can get the applicant to acknowledge on the record that she's okay with that.
Do you want the applicant to acknowledge it separately for PC 5 and PC 6?
She can do it all at once. I'm fine with that.
Barbara Willhite, 63, 27 Grand Boulevard, Newport Ritchie, Florida, for the applicant here on P 5 and P 6. And yes, we are agreeable and would request that we move forward and acknowledge that that typo was in the ad regarding the name of the property owner.
All right. Thank you.
Do you want a call for public comment on PC 4 or...?
PC 5.
PC 5, I apologize.
Okay, so PC 5. Is there anybody here to speak on that, other than Barbara? See no objections? PC 6?
PC 6 is PDD 22CU12. It's for the same property, MB Real Estate Leasing LLC Softwind. It's for conditional use for fertilizer manufacturing in an I-2 General Industrial Park District. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as included in your agenda packet.
Okay, I know the applicant's present. Is there anybody here to object? Again, I see no objections. Is anybody on WebEx?
There's no one on WebEx for that item, nor was there anyone on WebEx for PC 5.
Okay.
Following item is PC 7, it's PDD 220321. This is a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment, CPAS 2208 Dempsey &amp; Daughters. It's for a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map 2-15 and Sheet 22 from Res 6, six dwelling units per gross acre to comm commercial. This comes to you with a recommendation that you find it consistent with a comprehensive plan and recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners.
All right. Any applicants present? Anyone here to object? I see no one.
And that is the end of your consent agenda, I believe.
Okay. So did I hear a motion?
Motion. Second.
Have a motion to approve the consent agenda submitted. We have a second. Any further discussion of the item? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Okay, motion carries.
Number one, I apologize. We do have two addendum items. One of them is on consent. May I read that item into record, and if there's any questions, then you can call for public comment.
Okay.
I apologize. It's a little bit different than what we're used to. So there is this addendum item. It's PC 11, PDD 220320. This is staff-initiated. It's a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment, CPAS 2211 for One Lakouchi Center. It's for a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map 2-15 and Sheet 1 to IL from Res 9, nine dwelling units per gross acre. And we are asking, as the local planning agency, that you find this item consistent with a comprehensive plan and recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners.
All right. Is anybody here to speak on this one? See no one.
Denise, just one quick question. The future land use map that's in the maps packet, the, it doesn't look like all three parcels of the northern parcels are captured in that proposed future land use map. I think that's a minor revision, but before it goes to the board.
So I believe the project planner has listened to what you stated and will get that fixed. If this looks familiar, this location, it's because we brought another change a couple of months ago, so this is just to pick up some items that were not picked up on that one.
Very good.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, there was somebody raised their hand in the audience, I think, when you asked if somebody wanted to speak to it.
Was there somebody that raised their hand that I didn't see?
I apologize, but my daughter or my stepdaughter lost my hearing aid, and I can't hear. All I wanted to know is when I can speak, just tell me, and I can give my three-minute presentation on this piece of property we're going to discuss today.
Absolutely. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, sir, you're here for item PC 4, which is DND LLC?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
That was already pulled off consent, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we need to approve that?
And then that motion?
PC 11 on the consent agenda?
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion of the motion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Okay?
All right.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Denise Simon, Planner 2, Long Range Planning. Today we'll be discussing PDD 22-0317, which is a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment. We also received a letter that is not in your agenda, and I'm requesting a motion to add this to the record. This letter from that.
Okay, do we have a motion to receive and file, please?
Still moved.
Second.
You have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? If not, all signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Very good, thank you.
Just to be clear for the record, we're on PC 8, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to be clear for the audience, because I think we jumped ahead a little bit. Just want to make sure everyone knows we're on PC 8.
Yeah, we're jumping around.
Yes.
Going from 6 to 11 to 8.
Okay, so we're on item PC 8, okay.
Not numerical today, that's all right. All righty. Today we'll be discussing CPAS 2110 Lakeshore Workforce and Family Needs Apartments. This property is located in the West Market area, which is also our urban service area, a part of it. What's being proposed right now is an amendment to the flu map 2-15 Sheet 3. It's going from Res 6 to a Res 24, and it's located on a property that is 2.53 acres. It's located at the northeast corner of Dallas Drive in Lakeshore Boulevard, which is west of the 5A area, about across the street from the Bayonet Hospital. It's also following this comprehensive plan amendment, they'll be going in for a rezoning from a PUD to a MF3. You'll notice in red is the location of the site. You'll also notice that the hospital is right behind it, right off of 5A. So you'll notice that this is an area that is being promoted for higher density. Like I told you, it's going from a Res 6 with the future of 24 is being requested. Zoning currently is a former PUD. This right here is a conceptual plan, which will be cleared up also during the site planning later on, as it goes through the process. A little bit of a background that I feel is important, and you'll notice in the letter that I have just submitted to you all, is that this is 60 units, and 50% of those units will be used for workforce housing. Also, two additional units within this complex will be used for families that are utilizing the hospital across the street for emergency needs. It's kind of an idea of thinking of kind of like Ron McDonald House type of thing. So two units will be used for those purposes, to help those families and those patients. And additional information is that the area is expected to have a growth, especially with the expansion of the hospital, of 198-plus jobs coming out of there. This was consistent with our policy flu 8.1.1, which is for the West Market area, as we're trying to increase the density, as well as making a place where we can live, work, and play in this area, the service area expansion, as well as encouraging residential infill within our urban service areas, as well as having more attainable and affordable homes within Pasco County, and innovation to reduce sprawl. So the recommendation is that we recommend that the local planning agency finds this proposed amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan and recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead, Nicholas.
I guess one's a comment. Can we just make sure that in the future, these are, I can't tell whether this item was supposed to be regular or consent, because it's not noted on the agenda? We need to make sure that it says consent or regular, whichever it's supposed to be.
Okay.
What is it supposed to be? I assume regular since you did.
It's regular since I'm speaking, yes.
Okay, all right. And then my second question is, you said it was going to be zoning to MF3. Are all the restrictions you just talked about going to be in a deed restriction as part of that zoning?
Which restrictions?
About the types of housing that it would be, I mean, you can go back to your prior slide, that, those restrictions, are those going to be in a deed restriction? Because normally MF3 doesn't have those type of restrictions.
These are not restrictions, no. This is what the applicant has proposed to have for this particular apartment.
Okay, but it's just going to be a straight MF3 zoning?
Correct.
So these aren't binding requirements?
These are not binding requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Can you define, so workforce is consistent with federal definition of what, okay?
Workforce housing is pretty much, you're trying to tell, what you're seeing with workforce housing is that with the AMI, which is the average median income, we're staying between 80 and 120% of the income.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Is the applicant present?
The applicant is virtually present.
Okay. All right, does the applicant want to say something, or does he want to wait for response?
Mr. Pressman, you can speak if you'd like to speak.
Is anyone here to object to this item? Okay, do we have any questions from the dice?
So I do want to say that I see the applicant on, and the applicant appears to want to speak, but we cannot hear him.
Come on.
Can you try it now, Mr. Pressman?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I won't add much to this. I'll tell you that we did send a letter into the county this morning. It was from the CFO.
Mr. Pressman, we need your name and address for the record, please, and whether you've been sworn.
Thank you. I have been sworn, thank you, Denise Todd Pressman, 202nd Avenue South, number 451 in St. Petersburg, Florida. Mr. Chairman, one member, thank you very much. I think the staff has presented this to you quite well. I will tell you, we submitted a letter to the county today from Mr. Tom Lawthorne, who is the CFO of the hospital, who notes in his letter that housing for the workforce near the hospital is tremendously sought and desired. The application would provide sorely needed housing for the current staff, and it would be instead of the future employees that take positions at the hospital. And the offer for a couple of units for family needs is very much sought. The only thing I'll say to you, Mr. Chairman, is that we are abutting in ROR category, which is already a 24 units per acre. So what we're proposing is abutting a large area of ROR, which would be the same density units we're requesting here. Thank you very much for your attention, and we appreciate your consideration.
All right, thank you. Does anybody up here have any questions?
Just a comment, I think this is a wonderful opportunity and something that we should try and emulate time and time again to bring about the workforce housing that we need in the area.
Yeah, the only thing that I just continue not to understand is why we allow developers to go in and tear out every tree on the property. That really is upsetting to me, and I just, I assume there's going to be a requirement to replant a lot of vegetation, but, I mean, it used to be a beautiful piece of property, and now you drive by, it just looks like a desert. So that part, I understand what you're saying, Don, but that part of it I'm not happy about.
Understood.
So I'm sure there's an engineering reason why that's happening. Maybe you can explain that to me, Jamie?
No.
Trying to come up with a reason, but if there's no reason, then why are we doing it? So anyway, that's my concern.
Mr. Chairman, may I respond?
Yes, please do.
This is, of course, a future land use amendment, and the devil, the details will be in the zoning that'll come through, but in terms of a future land use amendment, beyond the hospital, this is located in an area of high density, high-paying jobs, let alone the hospital, which are the most sought after by any jurisdiction for employment and to bring higher level of employment into the area. And when the site plan is put together, we're going to be as respectful and responsible for providing as much natural environment to the property as possible.
Okay.
And of course, we'll follow the rules and regulations of the county for providing open space and natural areas and open spacer.
All right, I'm just sort of getting my word out there that I'm not going to continue to be happy about, you know, this type of just land clearing without any consideration of the trees and things that have been there for all these years. As far as I know, that wasn't an agricultural property. And I think it was a mixed combination of trees, and I've seen it happen too many times, so I'm not really blaming the developer, because I think it's up to us to control that, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Again, I think it's obviously a needed, something needed, yeah.
Just as a question, and I agree, I think this is much needed and in the area, makes sense, and I wish more people would do this, especially in areas of jobs and whatnot, but just going back to the, this is being presented to us as workforce housing, yet when the question was asked whether there was going to be conditions and deed restrictions and commitments from them to do workforce housing, I thought I understood the answer to be no.
Correct.
Is there a way to, I mean, I know we're only doing land use amendment now, and that's probably something that comes up in zoning, but is there a way to make sure that gets carried through to zoning? Well, I can tell you, sir, that we do have a communication from Marcy Ellsberg, who is the Director of Community Development, which we signed off on on her form, that 30 units of the 60 would be workforce-oriented. I can put that on the screen if you want to share. And it is an effort that we made through Marcy to make that commitment, which she signed off on.
And it should be in your packet as well.
Okay, yeah, and I see it on here, and I guess from my understanding is that'll be part of a deed restriction then, because since it's going to be Euclidean zoning, it has to be tied to the deed restrictions of the zoning.
So I don't know what this document is, but is it something that's enforceable by the county, this document that you're referring to?
It's enforceable by the county if they're receiving funds from the county, and that's something that's going to happen a little bit later.
But in either case, during the zoning process, this is a goal of the developer, and we'll be moving forward with restriction on the zoning.
Okay, so then I'm hearing the applicant say they are willing to do a deed restriction. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
Okay.
So can we make that part of the record?
Well, I think Liam hears you loud and clear that when he processes the rezoning, that that's going to need a deed restriction, so I think that's probably sufficient.
Okay.
Very good.
All right. Very good, thank you.
I'll make a motion.
Have a motion and a second? Any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Board.
Okay.
All right, so now we're on PC 9, PDD 220311. This is a very quick, brief land development code amendment for the Planning Commission to consider, sitting as a local planning agency. So from a historical perspective, the Board of County Commissioners asked the Planning and Development Department to bring forth a modification to the Land Development Code last year, July of 2021, to increase the building height for residential structures or residential zoning districts, I apologize, from 35 feet to 45 feet. So that is what's before you today. The Land Development Code specifically states that the residential zoning districts are ER, ER2, R1MH, R1, R2, R3, and R4. So all those districts are being modified, the height regulation section of those districts, to call out an increase from 35 feet to 45 feet. That's what this modification is. I do want to read a correction into record, because the agenda memo does have an incorrect statement, which is that it was presented to the Horizontal Roundtable Interested Parties Group yesterday. That agenda was quite heavy, including a presentation from Elizabeth and myself, so we did not present that to the Horizontal Roundtable and Interested Parties Group yesterday, so I just want to clear that for the record. I will do my absolute best to get that done before the adoption date on this, which is June 7, '22. I don't foresee that the Horizontal Roundtable and Interested Parties Group is going to have an issue with an increase in building height, and I do see Jamie kind of smiling. So, but regardless, they will have a presentation prior to the adoption. And today, we're just asking you to find this consistent with the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan and recommend approval to the Board. First reading is scheduled for May 17 at 1:30 in Newport Ritchie, and adoption June 7 at 1:30 in Date City. And I'm here for any questions.
Is there any questions from the dice?
Can I just make?
I have one question. What about the fire department? Have they concurred with this, because it's going additional 10 feet?
We have not spoken to the fire department about that, but I can speak to the fire department about that. However, I do want to say that we do have structures that are taller than 45 feet, commercial structures. We have areas that are in the urban service area where there's commercial, where there's no maximum building height as well, but I will have a conversation with the fire department prior to the first reading on the 17.
Okay.
Again, this is a direction from the Board to just move forward with these modifications. David, I think you had a question.
Yeah, just, I don't want you to mess with the title that you put in the paper, but just on the agenda, if you could put somewhere in your title, modify height requirement, I mean, in parentheses or something, so that somebody knows what this is?
Sure.
Because it's not clear from the title, just reading it, that this is increasing height.
Okay. Will do.
Okay. Anybody in the audience here have a question about this? If not, I hear a motion, a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second? Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
Thank you. I think you're moving on now to PC 3, if I'm not mistaken.
Tammy Snyder, Planning and Development. All right. PC three is Aprilie CC MPUD, PDD 227557. Here's a location map. That's Elam Road to the south of it. That's King Lake up in the northeast corner. Proposed as a rezoning request from an AC Agricultural District to a CC MPUD Connected City Master Planned Unit Development District to allow the development of a maximum of 106, 286,000 square feet of office uses on a minimum of four acres and 525 residential dwelling units within a total project area of 158 acres. The dwelling units may consist of a mix of single-family detached, attached, and/or multifamily courtyard houses, or row houses, townhouses. It says no garden-style apartments, but that has been updated since this was created, so they may possibly keep that as an option. The applicant is also seeking variations from the Land Development Code, Section 901.6.d. 10, Street Design and Dedication. It requires all dead-end streets to provide a cul-de-sac. The applicant is requesting a waiver from this requirement for dead-end streets less than 150 feet in length. And LDC Section 805.6, Restrictions on Post-Development Wetlands and Upland Buffers Within Residential Lots and Non-Residential Parcels. It requires a mandatory HOA or CDD. The applicant is requesting a waiver only for the multifamily and non-residential portions under single ownership. 901.6.d. 10, Staff Analysis Says As The Fire Marshal's Concern Is For Life Safety And Has Made The Determination That Dead-End Streets Less Than 150 Feet Are Acceptable Without A Cul-de-sac. Staff understands that the Fire Marshal's determination allows for said variation. In 805.6, Staff Is Amenable To Allowing This Request As It Pertains To The Multifamily And Non-Residential Areas Only If They Are Under Single Ownership. If the areas are not under single ownership, then the standard HOA and CDD condition applies. And here is their master plan showing the mix of residential going on down to the commercial and office down by Elam. The subject site is currently vacant and has primarily been used for agricultural pursuits. 12.18 acre portion of the MPUD area is currently owned by, with Coochie River Electric Cooperative. The project area is in the central market area but outside of an urban service or rural area. And in Connected City, there are currently 192 single-family detached entitlements remaining. The Aprilie CC MPUD allows for 525 residential units, subject to a loom for unit types, with a maximum of 192 single-family detached permitted project-wide. And the proposed project is within the community hub special planning area of Connected City, and is such is required to have a medium density, and this MPUD is proposing 3.6 dwelling units per acre, which does fall in the medium density standards. And LDC Section 402.2.c. 8 specifies that variations from the code may be reviewed and approved by the PC and BCC during the public hearings, and variations shall be allowed where the BCC specifically finds that, in the particular case, the proposed variations meet or exceed the intent of the code, and staff has reviewed the requested variations and find that they do meet the intent as noted above. The proposed request is consistent with the Pasco LDC Chapter 400, Subsection 402.2 Zoning Amendment, MPUD, and with the applicable provisions of the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan. And with that, the PDD recommends approval to the BCC with conditions.
Okay. Any questions?
Questions?
Yes, sir.
So, if you go back to number three of findings of fact, I have a question about that.
While you're getting it, yeah.
There we go.
So, I was a little taken aback by that, and maybe I'm not understanding that correctly. That says there's only 192 single-family detached entitlements remaining in Connected City.
Correct.
So, does that mean that Epperson Ranch and Marada have all consumed all the single-family detached entitlements remaining? So, anybody else coming in? There's...
Aprilie's going to take the last. Would you like to speak?
I would love to speak.
All right, thanks.
I think some other people may have some questions about this as well. Brad Tippin, Planning and Development. Connected City, as you know, has a little bit of a different plan. The special planning areas are revolving around density. This particular area is medium density. The remaining areas that aren't developed at this time are high density. So, there's really not an ability to generate the required density in those areas with using a single-family detached product. So, that's why most of it has been taken by those people that own those areas that were in those other planning areas that were lower density. So, that's why it's maxed down at 192 that they have left. Depending on the mix that they are able to get when they get to the design phase, it may be a combination of other types of elements that are different types of attached housing, multifamily, things of that nature, to create that density. Does that make sense?
In other projects besides, I'm talking about...
Within the Connected City boundary, yes. This is within the entirety of the Connected City boundary.
Okay.
Mr. Chair. So, Brad, of the 192, are those all 40 footers? Is that what the proposal?
There is no requirement.
There is no requirement?
The main issue with Connected City in that regard is that there is a minimum. Connected City, unlike other areas, other areas have maximum densities that are allowed. Connected City has some minimums that are required. So, to reach certain minimum densities, which most of the area that's available right now that's being developed, are a minimum of medium density. So, it's very difficult to get medium density with a detached product. You have to go to, you know, it'd be a 40-foot lot at best if you have a mix with some townhomes and things like that in there as well to kind of up that density.
Okay. Okay, any other questions?
Mr. Chair, just as a housekeeping item, though, we received two emails. If you could get a motion to receive and file these on the side.
Make a motion, please.
Motion to receive and file.
Have a second? Any further discussion in favor, signify by saying aye.
Does the clerk have a copy of the emails on? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Clark Hobby, Hobby and Hobby, PA, 109 North Brush Street, Tampa, Florida, have been sworn here on behalf of the applicants on the site. As you heard from staff, the site is located in Connected City in what's called the community hub zone. And for your benefit, to put a little finer point on it than what staff mentioned, you all invariably are very much aware of the development in Marada and Epperson. Those are located in other areas of Connected City that specifically allow for a lower density of development. This is in the medium-density area. The community hub comp plan requirements require that it meet the medium density. The overall intent of the community hub is to create mixed-use projects that could create a blend of employment and mixed-use housing opportunities. And discussions with staff over the last year show, as we go from over on Curley at the lowest density and moving to the west, we are approaching the business core zone, and staff thinks that the best planning objectives are not only to phase out having single-family, as was mentioned, but to get to a higher density as you approach that area. Because if you don't know the business core zone, which is kind of the southern area of Pasco Town Center, that's going to be a very intense and dense form of development down in that area. So, staff wants to make sure these areas are working together. In this case, we took all the governing docs from Connected City and all the input from staff, reviewed the comprehensive plan policies and the financial plan, and made sure we were consistent with all of those. And some of the things we're doing here is we're building the first segment of Kenton Road. We're having to acquire right away from third parties for it, and we're dedicating right away. We're going to be redesigning the intersection of Elam Road and Kenton Road to address an existing offset that staff identified. That's a fairly extensive amount of work and background work that's had to go into making that happen. And then, we know, and you're, I think, going to hear from maybe one of the neighbors, you know, having grown up in Dade City, I fully realize this is a very rural area traditionally. And so, we knew this was going to be one of the sites that our neighbors would be very concerned about the form of development and changes over time. So, we've had a series of meetings with them, and my client literally has spent the better part of the last week out there, meeting with our clients and trying to make everyone happy. And we have a series of private agreements with them that relate to trees that we're going to save on our property line that provide nice buffering for them, some additional tree mitigation that we're going to do on our site, and then some landscaping things that we're doing for our neighbors. The upshot of all that is that we received, and I'll give these to the clerk in just a minute, we have letters of no objection from eight of the 10 neighbors that are directly across Kenton Roads. I think we've done a really nice job making sure we're being good stewards and good neighbors. Then, just a couple of other things.
Clark, do you want to...
Yeah, I'll go and provide these.
Do they have a motion?
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just a couple of other things here. We are, as staff noted, providing a service-ready site at the corner of Elam and Kenton, and we're working with our neighbor, the Woodlack, Woodlack Coochie River Electric Cooperative on that, and we anticipate having a really nice use there. We've got some intel from them about what's probably going to go there, and I think everyone will be happy about the job creating uses there. We've also given extensive thought to the cross-connections with the MPUDs, the MPUD that's directly to our east and southeast. We have a lot of interconnections between that and the various parcels on our site to ensure that the connected and connected city is being met. The result of all this is we have a really nice mixed-use development with great interconnectivity, employment, and housing options. So, I think we're hitting all the requirements of Connected City. Appreciate your support, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Any questions? All right. Thank you. Clark? Any questions from the audience?
We do have someone signed up to speak, Michael Polterak.
Okay.
And then, can I ask for just point of information?
Yeah.
Because I am a president.
Yeah, once you just come on up, we'll call...
Michael Polterak, 9152 Kenton Road. I am on one of the adjacent properties. Just maybe for clarification for Mr. Williams, we have been notified, or the public information that's come to us about the project across the street with DR Horton is supposed to be 277 single-family residential's. So, that number would exceed the 192. I don't know how that all plays into the mix. So, that is a question I have for you. When you... Is now okay to start public comment?
Yeah. You've been sworn.
Thank you, sir. I am sworn. Yes, sir.
Can you give your name and address, please?
Yes, sir. Michael Polterak, 9152 Kenton Road. I'm one of the adjacent property owners. It's King Lake Ranch. Shockingly, I'm not going to be here to oppose the project. I am pro-growth. I am pro-responsible growth. I am pro-responsible development, and that's all that I ask you to take into consideration here. This is the aerial view of King Lake, which is on the east side of this project and also in my backyard. All right? Can you go forward a slide, please? Here's the issue that I'd like to bring to your attention. This is the, from Pasco County's GIS base map, this is the 2009 map, and I have the slides with the satellite pictures moving forward to show the lake level. The issue we're having with this project is not that it's coming. Growth is coming. The problem is, since 2009, the water level is up almost eight feet. My four-foot cattle fences are completely underwater during the rainy season, and the best I can do during the dry season is see the tops of them. We used to have land that exceeded about 250 feet past those actual cattle fence, and I have lost over 700 feet of land linear since 2009. Couple of points I'd like to share with you is, in 2009, there was three outlets for this lake, is my understanding, from all of the current residents. There was an outlet to the north that went towards Marada, went across Tyndale Road, or McHenry, I apologize. There was an outlet on the south that went across Elam towards Epperson, and there was an outlet on the west that goes across Kenton Road at approximately 9350 Kenton Road, and those were the three outlets for the lake to get out. In 2009, when this picture was taken, and I actually have the Google satellite image from 2009, it was approved to move land on the north side of the lake, which prevented the water flow to the north towards the Marada wetlands.
Go ahead.
Thank you. On the south side of the lake with the Epperson development, it also blocked off the overflow of the lake on the south side of Elam, which has left over one, only one overflow point for the entire lake. That's across Kenton Road. If you guys talk to streets or roads and streets, they have rebuilt our road continuously because the lake overflows through our backyards and across the street. We are on the verge of living in the 100-year flood zone around our homes. So, we don't have an issue with, I don't have an issue with, the development and the growth. The problem is, with the development that's being applied for, if 25 acres is covered with hard surface, that's 1.2 million square feet that's going to shed water, and naturally will go into our major waterway here. And the problem is, that flood, the elevation level of the water has created a situation where flooding is so prevalent everywhere on the east side of Kenton Road, that with the continued development down Kenton Road on the west side with the potential DR Horton project, that will dam off that side of the road. It's a floodplain currently. So, what I would like to ask the members to consider is, with a development plan, the stormwater and reclaimed water facility is straight across the road, straight across Elam on the south side of this project. If we could get you to work with us to help us establish a base or maximum elevation level for the water in this lake, I would like to propose to you to do an overflow that would prevent the lake from flooding us all out, and it could be taken straight through this property to your facility that's already in place. And the important part about this is, I'm pro-development, I'm pro-growth, but please don't do it on the backs of the current residents and property owners that are trying to keep this as our homesteads and provide agricultural supplies and services and resources for the entire area. We produce beef, chicken, eggs, you name it, CSA gardens. That's going to be the heart of this Connected City. It's in my plan that we will actually have a farm in the middle of this Connected City to help with the entire area. The issue is, we are having our land stolen away from us because of the developments. So, if you would please consider working with us to help us control the lake level and give us our land back for my cattle and for our efforts, it would be amazing. We don't have a problem with the development. Thank you so much for allowing me to go over my time.
Okay. Thank you for coming.
Have a question. Have a question, yeah. So, how long, how long have you lived there?
We've lived there for almost two years.
Okay. And the reason I ask, and maybe an engineer or somebody can comment, but I live on a lake not far from here, and in 2009, 10, 11, it was very dry. The lake I live on, there was a lot more land. Now, the water's come back, and so there are those cycles. So, I don't know, again, I appreciate your perspective. I don't know if the reason that the water has come back is not necessarily because there's something been done, or whether it's just a cycle of nature and more water in the area, et cetera. So, that, I'll just throw that out.
Could I answer that with some satellite images and the rainfall? Historical?
Well, again, I...
I don't want to, I don't want to...
Just reviewing the satellite images for my lake.
Yes, sir.
And it coincides that in 2009, 10, 11, mine was very dry. You're saying this was far lower. Now, it's come back. Mine's a lot higher than it used to be.
Yes, sir. In the electronic document that's been provided for record, there is the historical rainfall, which shows that from '09 until '17, there was no variation in rain. It's the same rain every year, and the water level just miraculously continued to go up and go up with all of the moving of dirt. But in this file, it has that as well, and from '09 to '17, there was no increase in annual rainfall.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can just tell you from my experience, because I'm familiar with the Bartle property out there. They're 8,000 acres. out there, they're 8,000 acres, and they experienced the same thing you did. They rigged the lake, went down to almost nothing.
Yeah.
And now it's back, but it'll go down again.
Right. It's, it's a cycle.
It's a cyclic thing, but.
I mean, again, we do have to.
Clark, do you, would you like to respond, Your Honor?
I think you may have one, did you have a person on the webex? Or not?
No, that person is for another item.
Mr. Chairman, this is Clark Hobbie again. I'll be extremely brief. I think what you heard was not so much any objection to our development, but concerns about the lake levels out there. I have Jordan Schrader here with me, and we will meet with the neighbor. I can say, we're not building Kenton Road all the way up to where this neighbor lives. They live a good little bit up from us, and Jordan thinks that there may need to be a new outfall when Kenton Road is built, and it may help with some of that, but obviously we can't de-water King Lake either. But we will meet with the gentleman when we leave here today and try to address his questions as best we can.
Yeah, I think it's important that we, you know, we try to help wherever we can. I know you always do that, so.
Well, one, one other thing I should say, if, you know, we're, if we see something and the county can help us address it as part of the work we do at Elam and Kenton, you know, we could address it then.
All right.
Yes, sir.
So I don't know if this is, the other question that was asked, and I don't know if this is for you or staff, but the, the comment about the DR Horton 200-plus units, is that, is that, do you know if that's part, or Brad looks like he's ready or?
I, I would say I may have a little bit of involvement there, and my understanding is I think there may be a different plan of development for that project now that's more in line with what staff is saying about the level of density that needs to occur there. I think the gentleman might have heard something from about a year and a half ago.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Clark, can you address the two? Do you have these emails we got?
Well, I think one of them was from Mr. Singletary, and it was mainly just about, he was hoping the site could stay more rural in nature. We, that was one of the neighbors we met with, and I specifically provided some things for our neighbors about tree saves and tree mitigation to address his concerns, but I don't really.
The other email says substantially the same thing, that they wanted to stay rural.
I think that's, I think that's his neighbor directly to the north. We've met with them, and again, they, I think the one email came from one of the EKIS family members. They've lived there for about 45 years. And again, it's, this is one of these situations where connected city was adopted some years ago. It was a legislative change from the state, and the county's implementing it, and this area's not going to stay rural much longer. It's just not going to. So what we're trying to do is be a good neighbor and provide good buffering where we can to fulfill the connected city goals while not overwhelming our neighbors.
Can I just ask, planning staff, do you remember whether we, we, when we adopted connected city, didn't we notify all the residents about what was happening there?
David, you did, and the neighbors, I would say most of them have told us in meetings that we've had. We've had a series of meetings with them, and they acknowledged that some of them were just really hoping the area would stay more rural. I mean, and they kind of readily acknowledged that. I mean, Ernie met with them, and Ernie came out and met with them with us, you know, a month or so ago, so he's, I mean, he can speak to that if he'd like to.
I guess in my opinion, the horses sort of left the barn on keeping this area rural when we adopted connected city.
That's pretty much what Ernie told them.
Okay.
Yeah, I think for anybody who's arrived later, like, like you, like the other gentleman said, he's been there for two years, you know, that he may not have known that, might not have been familiar with that. Of course, it's not your fault, but.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Pretty much, District of Andrew, yes. I was present in many of these neighborhood meetings a few years ago. I think there's at least a dozen. There was a large turnout. They worked on the plans as well. The problem when you move in and you don't know about these things, we do put all the paper, all the enabling documents are on the website. And so anyone, when you're buying property, hopefully the realtors will realize and tell their clients, this is in connected city, and there are special rules and regulations to that. Again, that's what we do. We want to try to be very transparent as we can be.
Thank you.
Brad Tippin again. Just wanted to clarify a little bit on that, too. The gentleman that spoke of the single-family homes, he may have been speaking to an old plan like Clark had mentioned, but also the term "single-family" tends to be generic. There's different types of single-family. There's attached and detached. So the single-family attached product gets us closer to the density. So they may have been looking at a single-family attached product or a combination of detached and attached to get to that density. That's why they could have a higher number than the actual single-family detached that's designated in connected city.
Thank you. All right. Anything else? Any other questions up here? Not, they hear a motion.
So moved.
A second.
We have a motion to approve the application that's submitted. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, like sign. Okay? And motion carries.
Liam Devine, Planning and Development, item PC4, PDD 22-7609, in the name of DND LLC. It is zoning amendment from R4 High Density Residential District to MF1 Multi-Family Medium Density District.
Oh.
Those are seeing your picture.
Oh, okay, let me just go back. The subject site is currently located on the west side of Hicks Road, approximately a quarter mile south of New York Avenue. This is a look at the aerial view of the subject site. This is the future land use. To the north, south, and west of the subject site is Res 6, and to the east is Res 3. This is a look at the surrounding zoning. To the northeast and south of the site is AR, and to the west is a PUD which allows single-family homes. The subject site is currently undeveloped on approximately 14.03 acres. The applicant is proposing to develop the property with 84 townhomes in conformance with the MF1 district standards. I would also like to note, in 2005, the subject property under its current zoning had an approved special exception to allow duplexes. So currently, the site already does allow multifamily dwelling units. The applicant has voluntarily recorded a deed restriction. Those restrictions are in your agenda packet. Access to the site, access to the property is from Hicks Road, a county-maintained collector's road with approximately 50 feet of right-of-way. The subject site has a future land use classification of Res 6. Currently, the property is zoned R4, which the density would allow 84 single-family dwelling homes. With the proposed rezoning, it would still allow 84 dwelling units, so the density would not be changing. And the recommendation is coming from PDD staff for approval. I'm here if you have any questions.
Any, any difficult questions for Liam?
Not difficult. I got a question for Chris on schools and capacity up in that area in the, in the lake.
I appreciate you asking that. That's a good question. You know, that's something, right now, our, we have capacity at the high school. If you recall, we, we, we closed Hudson Elementary a couple of years ago, and we've redone the campus there in Hudson, just remodeled Northwest Elementary, which is now Hudson Primary Academy, and then the middle school, which is Hudson Academy. So we do have a little bit of capacity there, not a whole lot, but, you know, certainly we also own some land on Hicks Road, potentially for a future school site. So it's something we're monitoring. I mean, certainly, again, we're not over, necessarily overcapacity in that area, but there, you know, this project, but won't generate a lot of students, but there are a lot of projects kind of popping up out there, smaller ones, so we are keeping an eye on it and, and, you know, just monitoring it right now and, and trying to figure out, you know, because we don't want to go build a, a big school when things aren't really overcrowded yet. So that's kind of one thing. Again, I appreciate it. I think, I think this particular project doesn't concern me too much, but it's all, all the cumulative projects, just trying to figure out what we're going to do in the future.
Okay.
So thank you.
Thanks.
Barbara Willhite, 6327 Graham Boulevard, Newport Richey, for the applicant. He does a great job.
Thank you.
Mr. Williams, I've been doing this a long time, getting old, and.
I am, too.
The school board's lucky to have him.
I'd say she was talking about.
Because we're able to move forward, we're able to move forward with projects and, and create housing, and he does a great job making sure the schools are there. So we support the school board 110%.
Yes, thank you.
And the folks that are running it. As Liam had mentioned, the current zoning is R4, allows for 84 homes. We're not increasing the density. We're proposing to do a townhome product. Already approved for duplexes. What's interesting about duplexes, and a special exception under your code, is that the duplex unit, the two units, but the duplex building has to be under common ownership. You can't subdivide those under, when you're approved through a special exception. So those turn into, a lot of times rentals. This townhome product will be fee simple homes. These will be sold. So it's actually an improvement for the neighbors that would probably have ended up with duplexes that for the most part were rented out, opposed to what this approval will do, which actually wipes that out, right? Because when you go to MF1, it wipes that out, and these will be MF1, where we will do a fee simple for sale homes, townhomes. The land use is Res 6. All west of Hudson is Res 6. When I look at this from a land use standpoint, kind of a geek about this, I look at it and go, oh my goodness, this fits all of the things that we're supposed to do. We're talking about a Res 6 land use with similar rezonings in the area. Collector Road, it's a standard road. The county's already made the investment in that road. It's a vision road. This road has future transit, a bus service. When you look at the LTRP for 2040, there's not a lot of roads, other than your major roads, that have anything planned for future transit, but this one does. So that one's kind of unusual as well. It's in the West Market area, it's in your urban service area, it's where we should have density. And we need townhomes. We need to have those townhomes for sale to have a different product type. Traffic-wise, because it's 84 homes, whether it's duplexes, units, or it's single-family under the current zoning, or now we're doing townhomes, it's still 84. So there's no increase in trips over what's approved, and we will have to do an access management standard at the construction plan review. And I, too, like, I did look at the, at the schools as well, so I was familiar with what Mr. Williams was saying regarding the schools. And there is a park to the, to the south. Veterans Memorial Park is one property to the south. So I'm not sure what the public comment is. I haven't heard. So I look forward to hearing what it is, and then coming back and answering questions and addressing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. All right. So does anybody else that would like to speak on this topic?
Mr. Chair, there is someone online to speak. Do you want to take that person first, or do you want to take the gentleman who's here first?
I think, didn't he request extra time, or no?
No, sir, he did not.
Okay. All right, well, let's just go, go ahead and take the person online, and we'll, I guess we have to give extra time.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Kristen Brenly, 14506 Hicks Road. First, I just want to say thank you for taking the time to talk to me. There are several things about this development that concern me.
Kristen, uh.
First, being the destruction.
Kristen, I'm sorry, I hate to interrupt you, but want to make sure you've been sworn.
Yes, I was there.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, so first being the destruction of the environment. We, within a 10-mile radius, have five new developments going on around us. We have Hayes Road. We have new developments that went up on Hudson Avenue. They're tearing down the trees from Five, from the, on 5A Road, from the library to the hospital. If you go back to Little Road, past Hudson Avenue, everything else is torn down, another development. There's another development going up on New York Avenue. They're just tearing everything down. This is taken away from the beauty of what Hudson once was. People are telling us every day, we need to save the environment, we need to recycle, we need to use reusable bags, and we need to have trees. All of the trees around us have been ripped out for more housing. At some point, we have to actually look around and say, what are we doing? We are destroying this area so people can make a dollar. The actual owner of this land called me yesterday on the phone, and we talked about what was going in. I explained to him my concerns, and he said he understood what I was saying, because he went to Hudson High, and he grew up running around in this area, that the places he used to go to are now gone with houses and developments. And I said to him, then you of all people should understand where we're coming from with this. His response was, he didn't own the land then, and this was just a business deal. To the families that live here, it's not just a deal, it's their home. Secondly, I'd like to talk about the schools. There are schools a street away. Those kids in middle school and high school, there is no after-school care. They have nowhere to go. They walk over to the, they walk over to the rec center for their parents to pick them up. So I feel like the traffic and construction that need to happen would increase, or I'm sorry, would create an unsafe situation for all involved. If you look at the area, you go around a sharp curve on New York Avenue, to Hicks Road. Then you're getting around to the curve where there's kitten trail and people are pulling out. There's already multiple accidents every year, but now you want to add another additional 100 and something cars coming in and out, since most families have more than one car. That's just for the time being, until they decide they need to expand. And for one final thought, I just want to leave with you, there's a reason that my parents and other families chose not to live, I'm sorry, there's other reasons that my parents and other families around us bought land here 35, 40 years ago. They didn't choose to live in a cookie-cutter community, but they wanted to be in the, they wanted not to be in the hustle and bustle of things. We don't want to be there today. This area is one of the last pieces of what old Hudson used to look like, and I don't want to see it destroyed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. All right, I think we had one more speaker.
Mr. Chairman, we have Barry Bailey and Robert Hicks, I believe.
Well, he's my grandson, he's helping me with this. Do I get pictures, too, of this area that we're discussing today?
We can receive and file if you'd like to give them to the young lady over there.
Move to receive and file.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Sir, are you, I assume you're not asking us to receive and file that picture. We'd have to keep it if you want us to receive and file.
I can't, I'm sorry, sir, I can't hear so well.
Okay. Are you asking us to receive and file this picture, too, or are you just holding it up?
That's 30 years ago, of this piece of property.
I understand, but are you wanting us to keep this picture for the record, or no?
No, it's my, it's what I take pics, because there's a leak in that picture, you can't do.
Okay. Thank you.
My name is, excuse me.
You're going to have to speak right into the microphone, and we're going to need your name and address, please.
To begin, I would like to thank this panel for the opportunity to bring this drainage problem in this area to light. My name is Barry Bailey. I'm 69-year-old owner of the property adjacent to the property we're discussing today. I own 500 feet from Hicks Road towards Little. I drive, I live at a corner of Upland Drive and Hicks. I lived here with my wife and three grandkids for 30 years, kid, grandkids, five. Pictures I've brought will help tell the story, which I brought here today, from 1992, when I bought and there was nothing here, and the drainage was fine. However, the water table in this area is really high, and being there 30 years, I washed it, rise and fall with each storm. And as I notice with the pattern of the storms, once they start in June, the, basically, the storms go in the same pattern. So if they go on the, by Mexico side, we got more than Mexico. But all we need in this area is one good storm, and we're flooded. Okay? Because the water table is as it is. And there's many lakes, and there's many ponds that are up to eight feet, and mine in the pictures that I provide, this here is like eight feet deep, and I found refrigerators and washers that wandered in and drowned when I bought the place. All right, so what I worry about most, because it's a closed basin where I live there at Hicks, that's all closed basin, from New York Avenue all, and people are building in there, and they haven't got a clue until we get a big storm. And we're going to get one, maybe two. All right, so the roofs, driveways, asphalt, everything is going to have runoff, runoff from every damn building. Well, what's going to happen? Where's that runoff going to go? Because there ain't no drainage. The drainage right now goes through the ground. Everything flows through the ground. You can stand right here and think you're dry, but four feet below you is, is the water table, and that's everywhere. We're talking everywhere. And if you look at that property, drive around that, that Hudson, Hicks, Little, back to Hudson, and you'll see exactly what I'm talking about. Now, like I said, I'm 69, and I'm not really adequate at telling you what, and I don't care what you build there, but the bottom line is, if you don't address the drainage, I'm gonna flood all the time. And I got a beautiful piece of property, and I own it, and I've been there a long time, so I can tell you what I'm saying. You better watch out, because there's gonna be a time when we're gonna get more water than we can handle. Hicks already floods, and you know, down at the other end of Hudson and Hicks, they were gonna develop that, and that's got a big lake everybody fishes in, and that baby's deep, and it can only hold so much. The last time the guy, I was here in 2008, we had a drought, and that's what happened, why the water was down so, we were in drought. And the bottom line was, yeah, you could build, but the bottom line too is, once we get our rain back, which is coming now, we're all gonna flood. And me, I'm just trying to like point it out ahead of time, because it's coming, and that area there is not safe to build in. Like I said, I don't care what you build, but the roofs, the asphalt driveways and all that's gonna run off. And you better have a place for it to run off too, because right now you don't. And if you don't have a place to run that water to, what's the use in building? I mean, I'm, I'm all for building, and, and, and family homes is cool, and I have not a problem with it. But you gotta address the drainage, and right there, there is no drainage. I've worked on this for a while, but like I said, I went back to college in 96, and I studied this. I studied the soil, candler soil, and can't build on it. You gotta bring in tons of soil, tons of sand to build on. And if you go over to drive over on Little Road where I'm talking, at Upland Drive and Little, they had to build that place up like eight feet, and you have to drive up to get to it. And all that does is impede the natural flow, because the water travels through the ground all out to the ocean. And it only can go out in the ocean two times a day, at low tide. At high tide, even the water coming in impedes the natural flow. You see where I'm coming from? Now, I don't dress good, and I don't look good, and that's why I brought my patent, but I'm smart, and I'm smart enough to know, if you don't address this drainage here, we're gonna be S-U-N-K. I thank you for your cooperation in this matter, and I hope I, I gave you some insight to what's going on at this part of Pasco County. Because I know you commissioners know your stuff, and you, especially you do, Charles, I appreciate the way you handled other things.
Thank you.
Good day.
I just want you to understand that as, as a zoning board, we don't, we don't decide how they develop-
I know, I gotta go to the next one, Jason.
All we, all we decide is whether the location is appropriate. Now, well, understand, this property is already approved for 84 units.
I didn't know that.
So they're not, they're not asking to build more units. And I, I think, Ms. Willhite's, in what she said was true, is that I think it's gonna be a better utilization of the land if we do a townhome, a to, townhome project, or where they own the home, rather than just rental units, like a duplex. So I think, I think that would be, serve the property better. So we, we can do what we can to approve it, improve it, but we can't change what it already is. It already is approved for 84 units.
I understand. So like I said, there's a lot I don't understand, but I just wanted to point out, this is so important to, to address this drainage, because if you don't, and whoever the developer doesn't, and builds that property up four to six feet, like that gentleman was talking before me, it's gonna flood. And not only that, it's gonna be right in my house. And then, and like I said, there's gonna be a lot of other people that should be talking today too, about it's gonna be in their house too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You just understand that when they do develop it, if they develop it, that they're gonna have to develop in such a way that they don't create extra runoff on the other properties. So if, if you're talking to an engineer, they'll explain that to you. Maybe Jamie, he's an engineer, maybe he'll, he'll explain it to you, I don't know, but-
Jamie, I appreciate you taking the time, if you do, but like I said, the only thing I worry about is the, and thanks so much to engineers, you guys know what you're doing. It's the developers start bringing in cheap soil and building it up, and they say, they give you a permit for four feet, and then they build eight feet, you know what I'm saying? And then the, the regular guy like me, that he's flooded out, and he's wondering, he's sitting there in, in the kitchen watching fish go by, and he's thinking, man, I should have said something else when I was there. Like I said, I'm just trying to point out the importance to the drainage thing here, because like I said, like I said, I know it, 30 years I know it, and I watch it. I know the water table of every minute of every day, within a few inches, all the time, because I can watch it.
Okay.
And nobody does.
Well, thank you for coming, and appreciate your help.
Have a good day.
Okay. All right, is there anybody else? I think we have one more, okay? Yes, sir. Can you give us your name and address?
My name's Robert Hicks, and I live at 9801 Upland Drive, but I own 9735. I own five lots and three residences here. And I'm not opposed to the development, it's gonna happen one way or the other. And the thing that I'm concerned about, the gentleman that just spoke, I have a daughter in high school, great high school. I got a son on his way home from college, he got a full-bolt scholarship out of there. And geographically, it's a great area for children.
Were you sworn in, sir?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
What I'm concerned about, I drive my daughter, even though I live one mile from the school, every day to school, because I won't let her walk. Because when I come out on Hicks Road, it's like all hell broke loose between the buses. They do a great job, but now, next year, they've announced that every child within two miles of the school must walk. How do they get down kitten trail? How do they get down Hicks Road without getting hit? I watch his children, his grandchildren, every morning, standing, he blocked the road, by the way, but that's okay, because the cars can't get through, and I don't have to worry about it. But anyway, I watch his children standing behind the Upland Drive sign to nowhere, where the buses coming by, waiting to be picked up by the bus. They're two inches from those children every morning when I round that road. That's my biggest concern. The other concern I have, I have all these great gopher turtles. They walk around my yard, and, you know, I've planted my olive trees, you know, my beehives and all this other stuff. I'm an old man with young children, a single parent. It's a great place. I hope they take into consideration and don't do what they did with the others, and take every damn tree out, and everything. Because when you walk through there, it's a nice spot, a nice piece of property, circles the park, it's a great area. We need sidewalks, we need crosswalks, and we need better access for these kids to get back and forth. My daughter walks to the park on Friday afternoon to meet with the kids. God help me, she's getting her driver's permit next month. Okay? I'm 75 years old, yes, with a 15-year-old.
You're a young man.
I love it. Okay? So I'm not opposed to the subdivision, but somebody's got to look at the infrastructure. And by the way, if you want, you can pave my road, you know? And leave it dead-ended, that'd be great, I'd be happy. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else? Um, do you have something to say about the schools, or the access, or anything like that you were mentioning?
Oh, well, just, you know, well, you probably saw in the paper, you know, with our shortage of bus drivers, and, you know, we're just, you know, we do a lot of courtesy bussing, and so, just so everybody knows, what does that mean? So the state reimburses us for transporting students who are outside of the two-mile walk zone.
Mm-hmm.
And so we get reimbursed for that. But anybody inside that two-mile walk zone who, who is not in officially designated areas where it's dangerous, or deemed dangerous, that we have to transport, then we're footing that bill. And with the shortage of bus drivers and staff, we just can't afford to keep doing all, all the courtesy bus routes that we're doing. So we're trying to scale that back, but that makes, makes it hard if there aren't sidewalks and ways of pedestrian access to get to those schools. So it's certainly a, a difficult thing, so.
So maybe Barbara can enlighten us on that, that part of it, the sidewalk issue and the-
And I'd also, and I was also gonna mention that I'd like to hear if, if this particular property is in a basin, a closed basin or not. Certainly, if it is, I know the engineers will be looking at that.
Sure, Barbara Willhite, and our engineer is here, and heard that testimony, and can speak to some of those issues, and answer your question. With regard to schools and walking, I walk to school, back and forth to Richie Fundamental Mentory, back and forth from seven, oh, gosh, it was Gulf Middle and then Gulf High. My brother wouldn't drive me to Gulf High, even though he had a car. I still had to walk. So I'm familiar with walking a mile, two miles each way to schools, in any, but I, we will be paying, we'll be doing a sidewalk across the front of our project as required, and we'll be paying our mobility fees for, for BikePed, which is, part of the mobility fee now breaks down into different segments for things like right-of-way roads, Bikeped and transit. And so we'll be paying those, those fees. Hicks is a standard road, it's a vision road, it's a collector road. And as far as, the property's been Res 6, the vision for the property's been this density for, I calculated it, 32 years, since we did the comp plan. And something that's always, I'd like to point out for townhomes, and, is that it's homeownership, but it's also, they're commonly maintained, common architecture and common maintenance. You have a POA, Property Owners Association. Unlike a single-family development where you pay the homeowners association, and they chase after your neighbors to keep the houses nice, in a townhome, you pay the association to keep your property nice and all your neighbor's property nice. So, and with the POA, we have sidewalks, drainage, neighborhood park, and all those things for, for a project like this. So I appreciate all of the comments. We will have a good project here, we'll fit in nicely. It's great to hear the schools are great. I know they're great, because I know a lot of people that, that went to Hudson High when I went to Gulf High, and they've done well in life as well. So let me bring up our engineer to talk specifics with you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Good afternoon. My name's Jesse Blackstock with Blackstock Engineering, located at 1646 West Snow Avenue in Tampa, Florida. Just to answer some of the questions and also address some of the concerns, I think from a drainage standpoint, just overall, holistically, on any development in the state of Florida, as well as Pasco County directly, you cannot increase the runoff from your development, once you increase the amount of impervious area. So as we develop the site with roads and townhomes and sidewalks of that nature, we have to offset that runoff that's being generated with a pond. So our retention or detention pond, in this case, will handle our runoff to, no, to discharge no less than what's leaving the site now, existing conditions. And to that point, we can't alter the drainage pattern. So that goes both ways. We have a wetland on this site towards the west of the site in the rear, so we can't decrease the amount of runoff to that wetland from our pond. So the standard design would basically be a pond adjacent to the wetland to let the site drain from Hicks Road westward to a pond, and let that pond off, off-site discharge into that well, which is on our site, but part of it's off-site, it's not an isolated well. So to keep in mind, just, we can't decrease the amount of runoff to that well, and otherwise it will cause concerns for swift mud, otherwise we would be choking that well and or starving it. So if it's a flooding condition, that's one thing, we can't increase the flooding conditions, but if it's a wetland, it's got a certain seasonal high water table, we can't, as Clark was saying on a previous project, we can't de-water that wetland by choking back our site more than it already is discharging. From a closed basin standpoint, I'm not aware of it being in a special area of concern for swift mud or the county. I'm not aware of it being in a closed basin, but of course, if it was, it's got its own separate set of criteria that our pond would have to be designed for, once we got to that point, which would be additional, holding back additional water. So if you're in a closed basin, basically, you cannot discharge your site in a 100-year storm, which is basically equal to a Cat 1, Cat 2 storm, as far as hurricanes go. So if you've got any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we're, we're, we're not in the business of controlling how you, how you develop the site.
Understood.
Just whether it's an appropriate-
Yeah.
...location for a site. But I, I am interested, as a citizen, in how you, how you see the site developing in terms of, there's been a number of people, but one of the things that consistently ask about is, are the trees, what are you gonna do? Are you gonna knock every tree down, or are you gonna try to mitigate that?
Without a site plan, and being that this is not a planned development, so we don't have a dedicated site plan, of course, we have got concepts that we've laid out. I mean, I think some things to keep in mind for a site like this, because it has a well and, all of the trees with, from the 25-foot buffer offset that wetland line are gonna be maintained. We can't impact the buffer unless we seek special approval from both the county and swift mud with fill. So if there isn't a fill, that would necessitate removal of a tree, we have to get special approval for that. So you're gonna be left with, on the site, it's 14-some-odd acres, I forget how big the wetland is, but that entire wetland will be state vegetated, just like it is today. And then we also have to, if I'm not mistaken, and Barbara can correct me if I'm wrong, but there is a special requirement within the county's code with respect to park reservation space. So if, if the grading is such that we can save existing trees beyond the footprint of the wetlands, we would certainly do so, as well as, between units themselves. The way the deed restrictions are on this, there's no more than eight units side by side, as far as attached, so you'll have eight, at a maximum, you'll have eight units, eight units, eight units. And the, the thing to point out is that this is for townhomes. Typical, you know, we don't have a builder yet, but typical townhomes are 20-foot wide, 50 to 60-foot deep max, which is a lot smaller than some single-family homes.
Right.
So we're already shrinking the footprint of the homes, if you will, that we're gonna have areas in larger rear yards, if you will, in townhomes developments, larger common areas, to Barbara's point earlier, so.
Right, and that's a good thing.
Yeah, I mean, no developer wants to whack an entire site and have no trees left that they can manage it. It's just sometimes with stormwater, you have a potential to have a little bit of fill required, but on this site, we're actually high. And we have, as the gentleman was pointing out, we have candler soils. Candler soils are highly perosity, so.
Right.
And we don't really see a lot of fill having to be brought into the site, opposed to other developments in the area, so.
Well, thank you, I appreciate your time. Are there any other questions up here?
Just a comment, we're falling into Chris's comment about the sidewalk, so, and the change in bussing. So that was actually an issue that was brought up at the last MPO meeting, and the MPO board expressed a great deal of concern about us having inadequate sidewalks to the schools. The, I think it is a high priority for our board to get that issue dealt with. There is a program called Safe Routes to Schools, but it is a fairly slow process to get sidewalks built. There was one discussion by at least one commissioner that said that maybe we should be looking at spending penny-for-Pasco money as part of the renewal, to prioritize all of these sidewalks and get them built quickly. But we probably need cooperation from the school district to identify all the locations where there's an immediate need to get a sidewalk built, so we can get them on a penny-for-Pasco list. So just, Chris and I could have had this conversation offline, but I thought everybody should be aware that the bar board is concerned about that issue, we just need cooperation from the school district to identify where the, where the money needs to be spent, most quickly.
Yeah, and, and just for everybody's knowledge too, there is a traffic safety committee that meets that involves folks from the county traffic, from the sheriff's office, from our school folks, transportation, et cetera, that, that meet once a month and look at traffic related and pedestrian related, and so I'm sure they'll be involved in-
I'm just saying, we have an opportunity now to get it on the penny list-
Absolutely.
So, and I would think the voters would support-
Agreed.
-getting these sidewalks built for safe-
Yes.
-you know, transportation to schools, but we just need to know where the proper locations are to do that.
Yes. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, like, like Barbara, I went to Gulf High too, and I, I walked a lot-
Yeah.
...and rode my bike a lot, and, but, yeah.
That uphill, both ways.
In the snow.
In the snow.
And, and, but the one difference is, is that there wa, there wasn't a traffic back then.
No, right, right.
You know? So, I mean, I could play football out in the street, and it wouldn't be a problem, you know?
Yeah, you'd see a car every-
Today, we can't do that, so, you know, it's, it is a valid concern, and I think it's something that we need to, as a county, address. So I'm glad you brought that up. Thank you, sir, and thank you very much-
Thank you. Thank you.
For your time. Okay. Anything else? If not, do you hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
A second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vows, like sign. Okay, motion carries.
I think you're now on item P-10.
Damn, I almost overlooked that one.
Can we take a quick recess, Mr. Chair?
Give a question, too.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can we take a quick recess? Five minutes?
Oh, yes, yes. Do you mind? He needs a quick recess.
Not a problem.
Five minutes.
I'll approve it. Five-minute recess.
Okay.
Sure, the others, too.
Press, it's usually me.
I drank a lot off this morning.
I needed it, too, by the way.
Yeah, usually, I'm the one.
And LDC Section 905.2.D. .5, perimeter landscape buffering and screening requires perimeter landscaping on all sides of the lot, and a 15-foot Type B buffer is required between commercial and office, commercial office uses and residential uses. So the staff analysis indicates there's proposed vehicular connection to the existing commercial uses to the west and golf cart, low-speed vehicle, bicycle, pedestrian connections to the east, south, and west in concert with a connected city vision, but a vehicular connection to the east or south would encourage traffic to cut through the proposed residential neighborhood. And two 15-foot buffers adjacent to each other would actually create a 30-foot buffer. In a community that offers walkability and alternative transportation amenities, a 30-foot buffer would be excessive, and the separation of intensities can actually be accomplished within a reduced landscape buffer width with occasional interruptions for connections between the commercial and the residential. And here is our proposed master plan. On August 18th, 1987, the Board of County Commissioners approved a rezoning from AC and AR to an MPUD, which was Cannon Ranch MPUD, and C2, General Commercial District. The subject site is unapproved with agricultural pursuits. The project is in the central market area outside of an urban service or rural area, and the parcel is located within the connected city boundary but is not requesting to be an entitled connected city property. LDC Section 402.2.C. .8 specifies that variations from the code may be reviewed and approved during the public hearing held on any application for an MPUD zoning amendment, and the variations shall be allowed where the BCC specifically finds that the proposed variations may or exceed the intent of the code, and staff has reviewed the requested variations and find that they do meet the intent as previously noted. The proposed request is consistent with the Pasco County LDC Chapter 400, Subsection 402.2 zoning amendment, MPUD, and with the applicable provisions of the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan. And with that, the PDD recommends approval to the BCC with conditions. And I'm available for any questions?
Any questions?
Tammy, I've got one question just for clarification. Looking at the conditions of approval, number six, it talks about the internal buffer between the residential and the commercial use.
Mm-hmm.
Can you clarify, what are they intending to provide?
A Type A buffer. I believe they're going to do 15 feet, just one 15-foot buffer as opposed to two 15-foot buffer with trees 60 feet on center and a continuous row of evergreen drops.
I guess the reason I'm asking, let me further my question. This condition in the conditions of approval says that on the non-residential areas, they're going to put a 10-foot wide buffer. It says a Type A buffer to be established on the non-residential portion except for the areas of the connectivity. So my question is, are they intending to put a 15-foot buffer on the residential side and then a 10-foot buffer?
No, I believe the intent is just the one buffer.
Okay, except, the reason my confusion was created because the way I read the memorandum was is that they were going to put the 15-foot B on the residential and the 10-foot on the non, on the commercial.
Um...
Maybe the applicant can clarify that?
Yeah.
I just wasn't sure what the intent was.
County staff, for the record, Bruce Landis, representing the applicant. My address is 3810 Northdale Boulevard, Suite 100, Tampa, Florida, and I have been sworn Commissioner in answer to your question. We are, and this is an integrated commercial and residential area in that interface between the two. We're planning on a 10-foot buffer on the commercial side of it, and that's where the buffering would be. There would be no buffering on the residential side. And so we'll have a lot of pedestrian connections and some motor vehicle connections between the two. So we're hoping for it to be an integrated community.
It'll be a 10-foot buffer instead of a 25-foot buffer.
Correct, a 10, yes, sir. A 10-foot buffer on the commercial side of it.
Instead of a 30.
Instead of a...
Because the code requires 30, right? 15 and 15?
Except for commercials.
Correct.
Is smaller, I think. In commercials, yeah.
Correct. So our, we're not, we're not building a commercial out parcel. We're building something that's, that's connected and linked together. Ms. Petty, I've got one of those graphics that's, I think it's entitled "Interface Between Commercial" and all that. Perhaps you could bring that up. You might be able to, if you could, can you zoom in on that? So this kind of illustrates, this is what our project architect's working on right now. So that's how it would appear with, based upon what we're requesting, so that it looks like an integrated development. Instead of having a cordon...
Okay, yeah. Again, it was more of a clarification issue. I just wanted to make sure staff understood that's the way it was presented because it looked like it was conflicting information in the memo and in the conditions. As long as staff's comfortable with it, I don't have a problem with it. I understand what you're saying, and I just wanted to make sure that that was the understanding.
Okay.
I'll officially put that, I'll officially put down the mark. Yeah, that's, that's, the intention there was understood, so we'll clarify that language when we go to BCC.
Perfect.
Okay. Thank you, Brad. Any other questions from up here? All right. Is anybody in the public or anybody else on your side that needs to speak? I don't see anyone. All right. That's the case. Your motion?
Motion for approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. County staff.
Oh, yeah. Tammy Snyder planning a development.
You look familiar.
All right. Here we have the Swope MPUD, PDD 227542. Here's the location map. That's State Road 52 along the north boundary. This is in the Central Pasco Employment Village, CPEV area. Rezoning request from an AC Agricultural and AR5 Agricultural Residential Zoning Districts to an MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District to allow for the development of a maximum of 953 single-family detached units, 119 single-family attached units. And since this PowerPoint was created, there has been a change to the requested entitlements. They are taking the multifamily down to 336 units, and the support commercial office uses are down to 116, 882,000 square feet. Oops. Let's see, on approximately 493 acres. The applicant is requesting variations just for the multifamily parcels. For the neighborhood park, multifamily uses will be integrated with residential and non-residential uses, and so they want to do a 10% park area for the neighborhood park for the multifamily. LDC 907.1.E.F.F.3, onsite parking, the requirement is 2.25 spaces per unit, and they are requesting a 15% reduction down to 1.9 spaces per unit. 907.1.D. .2, onsite parking, the standard parking space is nine by 20 feet. The request is for eight by 18 feet, which is our compact size. And there was discussion between the applicant and the Parks Recreation National, Natural Resources Department, and they have agreed on the 10% park area for the multifamily area. The Land Development Code does require the two and a quarter parking spaces per unit. The 1.9 spaces per unit is consistent with studies provided by other similar projects, so staff is amenable to allowing the 1.9 spaces per unit. And their request for the compact spaces, PDD's recommendation is to allow up to 50% of the parking spaces to be compact, not 100%, because we do have a lot of larger vehicles that would mess up that whole parking count. So we did recommend 50%, and the applicant did say that they were amenable to that request. And... That is the wrong... Hmm. Wait a minute, I'm sorry. Somehow we got some of these slides mixed up. This one's the right one. 402.2.C. .8 specifies that variations from the code may be reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission and BCC during the public hearing. Variations will be allowed where the BCC specifically finds that the proposed variations meet the intent of the code. And this slide, of course, needs to be updated to reflect the changes that were made since the PowerPoint was created, and we did, the staff analysis is that we found that the requests were consistent with the Land Development Code. And the proposed request is consistent with the code and the applicable provisions of the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan. And, let's see, this is, this needs to be updated too, because all of these things happened like 10 minutes ago, almost literally. So this...
I mean, you haven't got them changed yet? What's wrong?
Yeah, I know, I know. I'm slacking, right? But the PDD recommends approval to the BCC with conditions, and we've already heard back from PRNR. They said the 10% park area is good, and the third variation has already been revised to say 50% compact spaces allowed.
Okay.
And there it is. Confusing enough for you?
Absolutely, yeah.
I tried.
One comment for Tammy.
Yes.
Tammy, on the park variation, it's clear in the conditions of approval, but in your memo, it's not really clear what this 10% is. It just says 10% park area, so it's not clear what that means. 10% of the entire MPUD, 10% of the gross acreage?
Oh, sorry, yeah, 10% of the multifamily.
But I think the conditions say it's 10% of the net developable acre of the multifamily parcel.
Correct.
I think that's what your agenda memo should say, too. Otherwise, I don't know what this 10% is.
Right, totally.
10% of what? Okay, so it'd be 10% of the whole county. But I don't think Joel would agree to.
That's a good-sized park there, I like that.
He'll go along with that, it's not a problem.
Plenty of trees. Yes, understood, David. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Anything? Any from the public? Any from the applicant?
Mr. Chair, I do want to add a housekeeping item, and that is that you had an ex parte communication with Anthony Scaglione on this item, and we will be receiving a, an ex parte form from Chairman Gray.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Planning Commission members Joel Tu, Tu and Associates, Palm Harbor, Florida. I am land use counsel for Lennar Homes, who is the applicant developer, and also the authorized representative of the Swope family entities that actually own the land. I'm going to be very brief since we worked out the issues with the other stakeholders in CPEV, and not, not do lengthy presentation, but just a little bit of history for the record. You'll recall that last summer, we completed a plan amendment that updated and modified the CPEV overall master plan for the entire acreage that has the 20 or so multiple landowners. Part of that included, included a lengthy discussion. In fact, I think we came back to you at least two times and possibly three, but we had a lot of interaction with EDC and the Office of Economic Growth, because they were strongly encouraging the Swope family to entertain an entitlement exchange with what was known as the Kokolakis East Parcel that was under contract to Mr. Southworth. So we were encouraged, and in fact, I stated on the record at BCC that Swope would follow up on that land use exchange as requested and recommended by EDC if the plan amendment were approved. So the plan amendment got approved last summer, and in fact, in August, I drafted and the Swope family signed, and Mr. Southworth and the Kokolakis family signed an exchange. And what we did in a nutshell, and what brings us to this MPUD, is we relocated a large quantity of industrial corporate office entitlements that were in the center of the overall plan. We relocated that to the eastern part so that they would be adjacent to the existing Southworth site where the Amazon facility was being contemplated. So we have now implemented and be able, been able to better concentrate the large employment areas in, say, the eastern third of CPEV, and then we moved the residential to the center. And, and that did two things. Obviously, you know, you got the critical mass for the employment that EDC was looking for on the eastern end. It's closer to Bellamy Brothers Boulevard where they had existing sewer water and infrastructure. And then also importantly, they had made the comment that it, it would probably help us down the road to not have all of the industrial interspersed everywhere among the residential over this 2,500 acres, because no matter how well-planned it is, people, as they appear, will start complaining that suddenly I have industrial coming next to my house, even though, as we heard earlier today, the plan for 12 or 15 years has contemplated those employment uses. So we're here today, flash forward, we implemented and recorded that land use entitlement exchange per the EDC request. We're here today to now rezone the Swope parcel to memorialize primarily the residential entitlements that were traded for, together with this quantity of support commercial office, which is being retained in that center part. So we're doing exactly what we promised you and the board a year ago that we would do. We're now zoning it so that it's memorialized, and we have allocated the portion of the overall entitlements. We've allocated those to the Swope parcel pursuant to an actual formula and methodology that we reviewed with all the stakeholders. We were required to have one meeting. We had two meetings with all of them. We then had one off-meetings. Subsequent to that was several of them that still had questions or, or concern. So to our knowledge, as of today, we now have no objections from any of the other stakeholders in CPEV, which is a minor miracle, to say the least, because any time you have 20 owners, you have more than one opinion. We have no objections to our portion, and one reason for that, to give the Swope family credit, is the Swope family actually has voluntarily agreed to take considerably less than the quantity of entitlements that that methodology actually would produce on a proportionate basis, because they control, as you see, nearly 500 acres. I mean, they have a huge swath of land in the center. They've agreed to take less because they have the contract with Lennar, they know exactly what Lennar wants to build, and they have knocked down their retaining multifamily entitlements to the quantity that they actually think they have a reasonable chance of using. The good thing about that is it leaves more entitlements on the table, in the mix, for these other landowners to be able to have more entitlements, you know, from the overall bowl, if you will. So kudos to the, to the Swope family for doing that. And then finally, as Tammy said, it was, it was a little bit late arriving, and we apologize for that. I know you hate to get revised conditions the day of the hearing, but as usual, until there's an actual deadline and we're actually going to have a hearing, you know, not everyone comes to grips with everything, including owners and applicants, but we got it done. We are in 100% agreement with those revised redline conditions that I assume you've been provided, and we urge you to, to support this and, and approve it based upon these last revised conditions, because we made commitments to some of the other landowners that these would be the reduced entitlements that we would take. So with that said, if there are any questions, we can go in as much detail as you would like, or not, but we would appreciate your support on the review.
Joel, can I ask one, one question about the entitlements? Because I'm glad you made everybody happy, but I guess, these entitlements that you reduce, I guess they're going back into some pot of entitlements for the other landowners. Is there some agreement among all these other landowners about who's getting what's left in the pot?
No, absolutely not.
Okay.
Okay? The only, the only agreement is this is how much everyone agrees would be appropriate to be put on the Swope MPUD, and they're happy with that number because it theoretically leaves more out there. But they all understand that until they come in and actually file for a zoning approval, they don't get entitlements allocated to them. But I think the positive thing, since we were the guinea pig, is we had to come up with a methodology that was provided to everyone, vetted with everyone. We actually modified that methodology at the request of some of the stakeholders. So there now is a template, if you will, that is being applied in this case that at least can provide a benchmark for how others could go about allocating those entitlements. But there is, there is no agreement other than that, to my knowledge, there's no objection to this portion of the entitlements being approved for Swope.
Okay.
Now, you do have two others pending. Just to update you, I'm also handling the Kokolakis West Parcel that is in MPUD review, and we will be back in with that hopefully in a couple of months, back to see you. And I know Mr. Southworth has the Eagle II MPUD pending, which is that additional chunk of industrial office that we traded him adjacent to the Amazon site. So you have at least two more in the hopper already that have been applied for. So I think this thing is going to start taking shape. Oh, and, and that's the last point, is, is based upon our exchange, there will be an administrat, if, if this gets approved, this MPUD, then there'll be a PDD administrative amendment of that overall master plan, because every time you approve an MPUD, it has to also come with a PDD update of the overall master plan. That's how they're going to track exactly how many of the entitlements are going on each parcel and how many are left in the overall. Because overall, it's 4,500 units and almost 5 million square feet of employment, so overall, it's substantial.
So, Joel, just to clarify, so I guess there is or there is not a document that allocates to each property owner within CPEV how many, let's just take single-family residential for a second, single-family detached. I believe in the CPEV, there's a limit to how many of those 4,500 units can be single-family detached, is that correct?
Yeah, 2250. Of the, 50% of the 4,500 can be single-family detached. Yes, what we did is, height design came up with the methodology and a chart that was based upon net developable acreage and the different levels of density or intensity that the master plan assigned to your parcel. So the short answer to your question is, and, and staff asked us to submit that, so in our MPUD file, in our zoning record, there is that fairly detailed methodology with calculations per parcel that show you that if that methodology were applied based on net acreage and whether you had low, medium, or high density, how those numbers would play out. And what it demonstrates is that if you applied that methodology, you would in fact arrive at exactly those maximum limits. In other words, it, it was ground-truth to make certain that you wouldn't exceed the entitlements. So there is, let's say there's a template there that should you and the board see fit, can be applied to the continued zoning so that you have some consistency.
Okay. Yeah, and obviously, my question is just to make sure that whoever's last in doesn't come and grab out of an empty bucket.
Well, and that's exactly why we've had the meetings.
Right.
That's why the, the, the plan amendment required us to have those meetings, and that's why we prepared that methodology. And there were, you know, the reaction to the first template is there was concern that, hey, if I sit there and do nothing and I'm last, there might not be anything left. How do I know that won't be the case?
Right.
And that's why we went back and revised it to address some of those concerns, and the numbers were run to demonstrate that on an aggregate basis, applying that methodology, there would be enough entitlements. Now, with that said, county staff has also been very transparent with those members and said that, you know, you may not get any more residential entitlements. Can't promise you the board's going to be inclined to give you any more residential, but on the employment side, based upon current county policy, you probably can ask for whatever employment entitlements you want, and you're probably not going to be told no. So they're all, they're all well aware of that, that if they're in a location that they think industrial office works, they all understand that the county is presently disposed to give you as much of that as you think you can build and develop and, and create jobs. So the real, the real cap right now is obviously residential, and we're making sure that works. And like I said, Swope is actually only asking you to zone about 25% of the multifamily that they would have been entitled to under that methodology. So they're leaving a large number of multifamily units in the pot that the methodology, based upon their land acreage and the fact they had high-density residential on virtually all their acreage. So they could have taken a lot more. So that's why I said kudos to that family, because they are leaving on the table for others a large number of multifamily entitlements. And Lennar's putting single-family units on the majority of the acreage, which had high-density residential. So they are substantially, if you will, down zoning from what that master plan gave this property after the land exchange.
Joel, I was asking the question, and Mr. Jordy may be asking for the same reason, is I would just like to avoid more of, on the day of the hearing, we're getting new entitlement numbers. It'd be nice if that was worked out among the property owners in advance. I mean, I understand you're the guinea pig. I'm just hopeful this doesn't occur with every single MPUD that we're haggling over entitlements right until the day of the hearing.
And I don't want to be representing whoever's here next and have to do this either, because as you can guess, my morning was wrecked doing this, after, after we thought we had it buttoned down. But I think it's, it's a little bit the nature of the beast, but I do think, you know how human nature is? I think the fact that everyone pretty much had to engage in our process over the last few months and, and actually sit down and look at the math and think about and look at their land, I would hope that we are a long way down the road for that not to happen to you on a repeating basis. I think everyone better understands now exactly what the plan does and what it doesn't do. I can't speak for them, but I think everyone is much better educated, and they also understand more what the county's looking for and what the county would or wouldn't accept. So I'm hopeful that it'll be much more smooth in the future.
Oh, I mean, it also affects the applicants, because they've got to do traffic studies based on a set of entitlements and...
Just like us, we did a traffic study based on more entitlements than we now are going to actually use. So we've, we kind of had to overprove our case, but we had no choice, because unfortunately, every, only way to get everyone to the table is to actually have a finish line and say, you know, we're going to the podium today, and we're going to ask for something, so it's time to wrap this up.
Mr. Chair, just...
Yes.
One thing, so let me preface my comments by saying I'm not opposed to the project. The only thing that concerns me a little bit is the reduction in the parking spaces to 18, eight by 18s. So despite the current administration and our buddy David Goldstein's best efforts to have us all drive Teslas, I think there's kind of an inverse relationship in, in Florida, though. We like our big trucks and our, so I mean, again, I'm not opposed to the project, I'm just, I'm just stating the obvious that, you know, I don't think in Florida, our cars get any smaller. I think they tend to get bigger, and when you put these compact spaces in with trailer hitches sticking out in the leg, there, there certainly is a concern about that. So I'm just putting that on the record. Like I said, I'm not opposed to the project.
No, and I appreciate that, and that is why when staff pushed back on our initial request, that's why we promptly agreed that we, we cannot exceed 50% for the compact spaces, that we have to keep at least 50% of all the parking for the multifamily has to be full-size to accommodate the trucks and SUVs. So hopefully, you wouldn't have more than 50% trucks and SUVs. At least we can accommodate that number. So I, we're, we're sensitive to the concern, and, and we're going to try to address that. And the other thing, too, which you're well aware of, I meant to say this, these new conditions, even though we were right at the finish line, we went ahead and modified these before it came in your package. As you know, you and the board recently just approved those brand-new tree requirements and brand-new architectural criteria for the single-family product. We voluntarily inserted all of those in this. So these conditions do have the latest, greatest tree and... And the other thing too, which you're well aware of, I meant to say this. These new conditions, even though we were right at the finish line, we went ahead and modified these before it came in your package. As you know, you and the board recently just approved those brand-new tree requirements and brand-new architectural criteria for the single-family product. We voluntarily inserted all of those in this. So these conditions do have the latest, greatest tree and architectural standard controls that were just vetted with the industry in which the board just adopted a couple of weeks ago. So all of the, the NAR single-family section will have that enhanced product. So we're, we're making sure we do that in all of them, even if they've already been in the hopper and under review.
Okay.
I'd like to ask just a quick question. I know you're representing the development of the homes that want to go into this area. Do you have any idea on the employment? You mentioned Amazon, is that correct?
Right, all I can say is, I can tell you that yesterday, even though I'm not representing the other parcel, but I actually got a call from a large industrial corporate office developer from New York with Miami offices that was inquiring of me about the CPV entitlement process, exactly what we're talking about. Because they are specifically looking at the industrial site that we just exchanged entitlements for. So the short answer is, in the marketplace, there is very high interest, particularly on the industrial areas you are there. There's very high interest in the portion of CPEV that has industrial entitlements. And I think, I think we're going to get a lot of action there. And I am representing, just straight down State Route 52, as, as David and Brad are aware, I'm representing Pasco Town Center now. And we already have its public record, so it's no secret. We've already modified that pending MPUD to increase those entitlements to 4 million square feet of industrial at Pasco Town Center at I-75 and State Route 52. So the market believes that you have arrived and that Pasco County has arrived on the industrial and office employment jobs.
Thank you. I would like to just push one industry that I think is needed, not only for Pasco County, but I think for this country as a whole, and that's computer chip manufacturing. I don't know what's going to happen down the road with Taiwan. It's a big question mark there. But I know I have friends of mine that work for, that are employed in the automotive industry. And they've indicated that one of the reasons they have to slow down automobile manufacturing is because of computer chips.
Yeah, we have to start making those here.
I want to really advocate that. And I keep advocating that with whoever I can. Sometimes I get the cold shoulder, sometimes I don't even get the opportunity to have my phone calls answered. But I know I was approached about this some time back and I advocated with that individuals or those individuals that I would like to see computer chips, so...
Well, if you get any leads in that sector, please let me know because I'll be happy to pass them on to... I have Pasco Town Center, I have CPEV, and I have Newport Corners, which just got approved this week. All three of those have entitlements now for that use. So I'd be happy to pass any of those leads along to those developers. They would, they would appreciate it.
Well, I'm asking. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Can I make one more comment? And I apologize that I didn't bring this up earlier to Joel and Brad and Tammy. But I do recall that there was a, there's a subarea policy for CPV that requires the posting of signage in the residential areas that says future employment to the neighboring properties. I think it would be helpful for this MPUD if we actually specified in the conditions where that signage has to be placed. Because the subarea policy is not clear. It just says you've got to do it, it doesn't say where. And there's at least one employment area in the north to the...
Northeast.
North, northeast, yes, or northwest. I'm just saying, there should be something in MPUD conditions that addresses where that signage should be placed for this particular MPUD.
We can, we can work with you and Brad to do that prior to the board hearing, if that's acceptable. We have no problem with that. I know we have the mandatory disclosure that Brad added for the future road condition on State Route 52.
The subarea policies have an additional signage requirement to put your residents on notice that there's employment coming in around them.
Gets to the issue I said. One reason we did the exchange is to try to minimize, you know, how much of that. But you're right.
I agree that to your east, it doesn't appear that you're going to have much employment.
But to the west, Kokolakis has employment, Kokolakis West has employment uses. So sure, we'll, if it's acceptable to the planning commission, I'll work with you and Brad to add that to the conditions going to the board.
That's fine with me. I just think we need to better implement that subarea policy.
Good idea.
Okay. Joel, Joel, I don't know if this is for you or this... I'm probably going to start with a question for Chris. I mean, what is the school situation with this many residential units in this big area?
So what we've worked out with not only CPEV, but also the development across the street on the north side of 52, Palmetto Ridge. Thank you. I can't remember them all. But we are planning for an elementary middle or a K-8 in Palmetto Ridge. But then we're looking to do a, not a traditional high school in CPEV, but more of a STEM oriented toward, you know, maybe technical, something to that effect. We don't know for sure. But some kind of smaller high school footprint in CPEV. We're in discussions with other owners in CPEV. We haven't located it yet, but we're working down that route.
With, with the Swope MPUD taking about a third of the residential entitlements, how does that, is it, again, is it the last person in type thing? Or is it just when it's triggered? Or is it, at what point does that get worked out?
Well, we're, like I said, we're, and we're having discussions with, had discussions with a couple of different owners. So we're working, we're working toward that end.
And in terms of shorter-term need, as Chris said, I'm also representing that Palmetto Ridge MPUD directly across on the north side. We actually, in the modification that's going through now, we've already committed that we're actually increasing that school size. Before it was just one site, now it has ability for, for two sites. I think it's up to 50 acres it's large. And that part of the reason that we did that was so that, because it's literally across the street, that certainly for the near future, that should be able to accommodate the emerging growth from both sides of 52 while Chris decides if and where he needs that specialized high school.
Right.
And we, we, and he has, he has, he has some existing capacity in the existing schools.
Right.
So we, we, you know, we, we had a positive feedback on the current situation with the school questionnaire.
Okay.
Good. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. All right. Any, any other questions or comments from anybody? If not, lay a motion.
Jordy took public comment on this one, right? You asked for a public comment?
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion of the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both like sign. Okay, I should carry it.
Okay, so Mr. Chair, Planning Commission members, David Goldstein. The, this concludes the public hearing part of this meeting today. However, Long Range Planning does have a presentation, a listening session for the Pasco 2050 comprehensive plan updates. So that's, should take approximately possibly one hour. So would you like to take a recess before that time, before that starts, or...
If we do, it needs to be brief because I have a...
Yeah, I've got a 4:30, I got to leave, so...
So I guess we'll just move forward with that.
Yeah. I was going to ask too, if, if there's a certain time, we can shorten it. So what timeframe?
We, he, he and I both need to be gone in about 30 minutes.
30 minutes? Well, we'll keep it super, super brief.
Can I ask you something? Do you have this in digital that you can forward that to us?
Say that again.
Do you have this presentation that you can forward to us?
Yes.
Because I have to leave, so...
Yes.
Please.
Okay.
I just went through this with you, so if you don't mind, I'm going to excuse myself.
Yes, you may.
I don't think I can offer much more.
I'm sorry, it's not...
No, that's okay. We'll follow back up.
Yes, please. If you can forward it to us.
You don't need a quorum because you don't have any more action to take. But if, if, if you all would prefer this be presented at a later date because half of you are leaving, I mean, that's up to the planning commission.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to hear, hear about it.
I, I already went through it, so that's...
You went through it.
Yeah.
And you, you're getting a digital copy of it, so...
We do have our consultants here. So that's the only reason, you know.
Yeah.
We can, we can come back and that was one...
Just go, if you, if you can't stay, then, okay, then just take on the responsibility. You've already done it and you're going to do it. And I guess everybody else will stay here.
Yep.
Okay?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, yeah.
Likewise, so...
Well, thank you. Thank you, everyone. I'm Valerie Brookins. I'm with Planning and Development Department and also the project manager on the comprehensive plan update. So the purpose today is really just to give a real brief overview, which you all are familiar with the comp plan, so this will be really abbreviated. Just tell you about the project timeline. And really, the purpose is just to start the engagement with you guys to, to help guide this plan. So that's where it was designed to be a listening session, to just get some input on some of the things that you think we should consider as we move forward. But of course, we are also open to coming back in a similar format. Or also, if you want to have a workshop, you know, to dive in deeper, we can always do that too. So I am going to turn it over to our consultant, Steve Schucraft. He is with HDR. And so we'll run through this real quick. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Steve Schucraft, a planner with HDR Engineering Incorporated. We're a national, international company, but we've got a big presence in the Tampa Bay area. We're doing some other projects for Pasco County. We're working with all the regional, local governments on comprehensive planning, small area planning, zoning reform, transportation projects, wide variety of service to local governments in the region. And I think it's, I think we should, we will be back to you for work sessions when we, as we develop the plan. So this is a long-term process. So you will see plenty of Valerie and my team and other folks on my team as we move through this process. Again, if we go quickly tonight, well, this will be quick presentation and some feedback and then we'll let you all get back to your private lives. But the idea, we've been doing a series of work sessions with groups around the county to supplement our research in the more technical aspects of growth and development across Pasco County. We've, we're diving into past planning processes and the documentation and feedback that, that the counties received through those processes. And we're supplementing that with these rounds of listening sessions. So we've had five so far. Couple more on the agenda, and then we'll continue to do these as we move through the process so we can keep people up to speed with where we're headed and give folks a chance to provide feedback.
Are there particular segments of the population that you're trying to gather input from?
Right now, it's, it's very broad. It's actually sort of broad, but not very deep. So we're not, we're not touching a lot of folks across the county, but we are trying to get geographically diverse groups. And we're trying to get different voices. But we'll dive further into that process as we move forward. So in terms of feedback, that'd be a great bit of feedback for us is how we might do that and what groups we need to reach out to as that kicks off. So these sessions have been designed, I usually give maybe a 10-minute presentation and then we turn over the rest of the meeting to listen and take careful notes and sort of press as people mention something. We try to dig in a little bit deeper than just, traffic's a problem. What do you mean? Where? What kind? What do you think's causing it? So we try to, we try to delve into those comments as people make them. But mostly, we're listening and we're trying to guide the conversation a little bit. This effort is going to result in what we're calling an Issues and Ideas Report. So that's the compilation of what we've learned through these listening sessions, but also our review of past engagement activities. So the county has done for the last five-plus years a whole series of different kinds of activities to get feedback from the community about what they care about, where they think the county's heading, and what they're concerned about. So we're mining that data and fleshing it out with some of these sessions that we've had right now. That report will be available in the next month to month and a half. And staff will make sure that you're aware of, either send it directly or make you aware of how you can access it and review it. So you know about the comprehensive plan. I don't need to go through this with you all. You know, state requires local governments in, in Florida to develop comprehensive plans. Comprehensive plans provide your authority to zone. So it's the basis, fundamental basis for your land development code. But it also provides guidance for capital investment program, conservation investments, transportation program. And then we're folding in some of the work the county's doing related to sustainability and resilience. It's, as we've talked to people, we ask them, do you know about the plan? And are you aware of what development is going to happen around you? And I noticed this afternoon, a lot of your discussion is to help educate people about history, about what's coming. And I can tell you, our observation is that it's kind of hard when you look at the plan to know that, to know what's coming. If you were uninitiated and you pulled up the county's comprehensive plan or went to the website, it's really tough to tell what's going to happen around the corner, up the road, down the road, and the timing of that. So one of the things we need to do in this process is to make those, the future more transparent so people understand what's in the pipeline, what's committed, what's next, and where the sort of edges between different kinds of development occur. We, we use this slide as a starting point for discussion. It sort of kicks off the, the notion that it's an important exercise. So you have over 250,000 people in the pipeline that are expected to move to the county by the year 2045. So in the next 20 to 25 years, you're going to grow and you're going to add an additional number of people that's similar in scale to this, all the people living in the city of Tampa. So we want to give people a sort of frame of reference. If you think about 250,000 people, that's how many people that live in the city of Tampa. So people can start to think that that's significant. But when you, also, the second part of this discussion is when you look at the curve, that's a similar rate of growth as you've experienced since around 1980. So we, as we talk to folks, everyone says, I've been in the county for a certain number of years. We made an intentional choice to be here for certain reasons. And then we say, okay, well, that's 1990, so you can see what happens from there until now. And what we're expecting is a similar curve or a similar straight line up until 2045. So we're trying to help people understand that there is a lot of development in the pipeline. Shaping that development is really fundamental. Preparing for it, serving it, shaping it is really critical. Again, this is information that you all know well. The comp plan covers a lot of bases, so we want to make sure people understand that it's not just purely land use and development, but it's conservation, housing, mobility, parks and recreation, public facilities. And then at the last one, that coordination element, it's also about how you make decisions. So the comp plan has recommendations about intergovernmental coordination, about processes like this that folks go through. You know, we have early notions that it appears you spend an awful lot of time doing conference plan amendments, which are kind of like land development code approval actions. And they're almost stacked right on top of one another. The comp plan is supposed to be a larger policy document that guides broader decisions. And the land development code is where things get executed and detailed. So there may be a way to separate those two documents a little bit. So you've got higher-level guidance in the comp plan and then you use your land development code to detail how projects get delivered, location by location. So if it's a minor uptick or uptick in density on a project, maybe the comp plan can absorb that level of change if it doesn't change the character of a broad area. But the land development code decision, if you want to change your zoning, that becomes a separate discussion about appropriateness, about compatibility, about impacts on roadways, schools, public facilities.
Can I ask you a question about that though?
Yeah.
Because most of what we process is amendments to the future land use map. So are you suggesting we not have a future land use map?
You need to have a future land use map. That's required by state law.
But I'm just trying to see, how do you get out of that amending?
You don't have to have the land use map you have now. It could be a more generalized map. That's a possibility that we could look into. Because right now, essentially, it's, your land use and your future land use map and your land development code are practically the same thing.
Okay.
So it's something that we need to look at. We've talked about with staff very preliminarily, looking into that possibility. So you're doing, you wouldn't be doing amendments at every meeting. You'd be doing amendments on a three-month, six-month cycle. That would be broader-scale amendments.
Okay.
Didn't we used to do that? More like that?
Used to be the state, the chapter 163 required that you, you had amendments at a more limited time period.
Yeah. Large-scale amendments could only be like twice a year. But the state eliminated that requirement, so...
Okay, all right.
The, and the thought of that is that you could also, staff could focus on, long-range planning could focus more on the long-range questions. Your short-range, your zoning, land development code staff could focus on the land development code questions. And you'd have a, they wouldn't be... And you'd have a, they wouldn't be, again, sort of stacked up and doing similar things, one comp plan-related, one LDC-related. This schedule, it, the way staff laid this out, it's a long-term process to build this planning effort, so we're starting kind of slowly and carefully. These first two years are primarily research and starting to think about the broad structure of the plan to the extent that it gets changed and adjusted. And then we move into years three and four, which is the actual drafting of the plan elements. So, that's when we look at the language, what gets carried forward from the old plan, what gets adjusted and what gets added. So, there's a big question about what moves from the current document to a new document. So, the most minor approach would be a strike-through and add-in to the existing document, but there's a possibility to restructure segments of it in a more significant way. So, that's what we're trying to find out, what's appropriate. So, our research supports that, will support that decision, and then we move into the, the actual development of each of the elements. And then the adoption cycle takes some time to get through all those markups and approvals, and that's about a year at the end of the cycle where it would work through sort of general public comments, come to you all, a series of workshops and review sessions, and then it would move to the county commission. So, that was the quick, quick introduction that we've provided to folks as we've talked to them. The listening sessions, we tried to get folks to organize comments around three primary topics. Most important assets to the county, biggest challenges, and a brighter future. And as you probably would expect, people tend to fall into the biggest challenges category. So, we try to start with assets to try to understand what people value about the county first, and then we move into a discussion about challenges, and then steps that could be taken to secure a brighter future for the county. And that's what we've done so far, so depending on your time and availability, we could listen to you all's statements about these things, make some notes, and then plan on coming back when we've got a little more time.
So, I have two comments. One is that our current comprehensive plan has a number of policies that say that by some date, we're gonna adopt some amendments to the land development code. And my guess is there's probably like 30-plus policies to that effect, many of which we have not actually done. And so, I would hope as part of this effort that the consultant and staff are going through those policies and deciding which of these are we really going to do, and which do we have time to do? And then if we don't have time to do them, or we don't have the desire to do them anymore, we really should strike them from the comp plan, because I don't think it helps to have a policy saying we're gonna do something that we never did. We're struggling with this in northeast Pasco with the design standards for commercial. I mean, it says we were gonna do them, we have, it's been 15 years now since we said we were gonna do them, and we maybe are just now starting to do them, but that's probably the only one I think we're working on. There's probably 20 others that we're not actively working on. So, I think we need to take a hard look about whether we really are gonna do those, and if we really are gonna do them, we should develop staff or consultant time to actually work on them and not just leave them sitting there in the comp plan where the public thinks we're doing something that we're not doing. And then my other comment is, I guess, talking about assets. So, Pasco has done a pretty good job, at least in the last, I'd say, 10 to 15 years, of trying to make sure that we have adequate sites for employment. You heard a bad example today with CPV. We reserve, and now we're starting to see the fruits of that labor, where office and industrial users are finally coming to Pasco, and we've got a huge MFA campus coming to the center of the, of the county. I guess, my main question is for the consultant is, at what point should we stop? I mean, we have a lot of policies that are directed on preserving employment, on making sure we get more employment, doing everything we can, as Joel said earlier, if CPV wanted more employment, we'd say, heck yeah, give us more of it. I guess I'd like to know, is there a possibility that at some point we have too much employment? I mean, I don't know, I mean, are we, are we reserved too much land for employment? And that, I, we, the problem is we've been so geared up on making sure we have land for employment, I don't know when we should stop. Like, where we said, okay, we've got enough now, where there's enough reserved, maybe we should encourage from other uses, too. So, I'd like to hear from an expert as to where, when we stop, when we should stop doing that.
Yeah, let me, I'll tackle, let me tackle the first, first one, and then.
Can I just tack on to that, too, though?
Okay, yeah.
I always, I don't think, if this has ever been answered for me, is employment is what? What kind of a use are you referring to when you say reserve for employment?
So, what we typically mean is office and light industrial uses, that's what we typically mean. Now, commercial uses generate employment, but our comp plan is focused on preserving off, employment for office and industrial users, basically, so.
Yeah, we're.
So, as a distribution center, is that a?
Generally, yes.
That's considered a primary, primary employment.
Under current county policy, yes, that is a use that we would encourage in the county.
So, the first, I, I think the first question about the, where there's timeframes and commitments indicated in the comp plan that staff hasn't been able to deliver for various reasons is really fundamental to get that cleaned up and to think about a little more of a strategic perspective about implementation of the comp plan. So, under state law, we don't have to have those objectives, necessarily have the time scale as tightly defined. So, the comp plan, in some respects, is kind of a long wishlist of things you'd like to see happen, but we need to have an action plan which puts that, those things in order. And the county can say, yes, we're gonna commit to deliver those things to implement the comp plan in a certain order, and people can see what's coming now and what's gonna be down the road. Right now, you have all those things stacked up in a queue, and I imagine that creates some anxiety among folks because you're not making progress on them, says you are, but you're not. So, yeah, I think that's fundamental, to get that organized better. We, we did some comp planning and worked for another community, smaller, but, a smaller community, but they identified something like 1,700 objectives and actions they were gonna take. You know, and our observation was, you could probably do about 20 of them, so let's get down to those first 20. And then you can get some, make some commitments to deliver on those statements about actions you're gonna undertake and make some progress. Because if you leave the 1,700 as all equally as important, you're not gonna, you're not gonna get anywhere. So, we, we appreciate that challenge, and that's one, one of the things that we'll get to is from an action planning standpoint for implementation.
And you listed, you listed a few questions, I think three questions.
Yeah, the second question that you'd asked was about the.
You asked about the, the assets, about the challenges, and there was one other one, I think. But, my point is that I think they're all great questions, and I think we all have some comments to make, but, I mean, I'd like to know what questions you want input from, and then give us a chance to think about it.
Sure, we can do that.
Rather than just an off-the-cuff thing, because I think, you know, I'd rather come back and have a more, probably a fruitful discussion about what, what assets do we have that we can use to a better service, or what challenges do we have that we need to overcome? You know, those things, those kind of things, I think it, I think it takes a little bit of thought.
Yeah, I wanted to respond to the question about capacity. We are, we, one of our subconsultants on the project is called SB Friedman Associates. They're economists and development advisors, and they're helping us do an evaluation of how much land you have identified for different land uses, and if you have enough based on the projections. So, we are gonna take a, a look at that. It's, it'll be similar to the work that you did for, or the county commissioners did for the multifamily moratorium, to try to see if you really do, if you have too much or too little, and when you're gonna run out of that entitlement in the future. So, that's a, a exercise we're working through now. So, some of those are, the support commercial, like the things that people have talked about in other meetings, car washes and self-storage buildings and gas stations, are, all, all serve the population. So, those are things that follow and serve the folks that you have living here now. The more primary industries are, are things that attract workers to the region. So, those are your, that, as you mentioned, office, office-type employment, medical employment are attractors and have the potential to bring more jobs to the county and, and cut back on some of those long-haul commutes. So, you're still serving, you know, you're sort of growing out of that stage where you're almost exclusively a bedroom community, building more sort of self, or self, you know, county-generated employment for folks in the county and eventually folks to commute from out of the county to here. We are gonna look at that, and maybe that's an early subject for a work session, is the results of that analysis. And we can, we can provide our initial observations about whether you've got enough or too much entitlement on the books now and where that, where you might direct that through the planning process.
You know, one area I've always had a concern about is the agricultural industry. We are taking land that used to be growing crops, oranges, a variety of, and as we diminish that land use there, what's gonna replace it? I think the largest person that I know of is Walton Simpson owns a chicken farm out in the Woodcouchy area. Where we give out a beef, our carrots, our vegetables, where are they gonna be grown at? Or are we gonna consume all the land that's available for homes? I like to eat, you know?
Well, I, I would just like to add, I, I thought it was interesting, 'cause, I mean, I was raised on a farm in Michigan, and I, I too value farmland. But, when we went on our tour with the northeast folks, we stopped at Mr. Goode's with the kumquat farm. And so, that was one question I had for him. I was interested in, you know, you drive out there, you see pasture land, but that's what I was asking him, you know, what agriculture do we actually still have here? Like, what are the products? And he said, honestly, there isn't, besides the few, few groves, few kumquats, but other than that, it's pasture land. So, I found that to be very interesting, and I, I'm not saying that, you know, it's, it's the only perspective or the only person that maybe has that answer, but coming from someone that still had agricultural land, I found that to be interesting and kind of surprising.
Well, there used to be a dairy farm out in Supper Hills, it's gone.
But, like, they, they were, how they were explaining it was, you know, people are volunteering to sell their land, and the price of land, no one, unless it's been in the family and you choose to keep it, which a lot of them are selling, no one can come in to that market and make money farming. So, that's, you know, like, those are the concerns that we have to balance out. And, I mean, there's still, you know, people that want land preserved for land being preserved and having open space, and, and that's a conversation, too, but it was, it was very interesting.
And I would add to that, that one of the reasons that our board and then eventually the legislature mandated that solar farms be allowed in agricultural areas is because that may be the new crop for many of these areas, because where they can generate some money from ag land.
My concern is the future for food, or are we gonna become a, we, we're at one time, I think we still, I don't know statistically, we're still an exporter country, but if we continue on, just the way I heard some of us speaking here, we're gonna be importing, well, we import a lot of orange juice from Brazil or South America. Pretty soon, we're gonna be importing beef. I think we need to, to reevaluate some way of allowing agricultural land to allow people to maintain it, whether it's a family farm or an individual farm, and not allow them the opportunity to say, well, heck, I can make a lot of money, I can become a millionaire, just sell it off my farm.
So, I will tell you, there was at one point a movement to effectively do that through a TDR program. But, the consultant who told us about, because where they could transfer the density that otherwise would have been on their farm to somewhere else in the county. The problem is, and then, you know, maybe made some money from that transfer of density. The problem is, the consultant said that only works if you're going to say no to density elsewhere in the county, and we historically have not said no. I mean, we, we're, everybody that comes in, we say yes to. So, as long, as long we're saying yes to everybody, why would you buy a TDR from a farmer? That's the issue. So, there is a way to do what you're talking about, but we've historically not been willing to do the extra, the other step of that, which is say no to development in the urban area unless they buy a TDR from somebody in the ag area.
And then on the, to, not to overly, I mean, I guess to, to build on that, too, you've gotta have the receiving zone that can accept more density. And so, you're having pushback in the places that probably would be receiving zones from multifamily, and you're still not at a very high density. 24-dwelling is breaker is not, you know, that's still a surface park multifamily project. It's not, folks call it urban density, it's not really urban density at that scale yet, but it's raising a lot of concerns. So, if you were to, if you were to have a receiving zone, if someone sold that right on a farm, and that were to be delivered, you know, like, sell one right there and you can build five more units down here, do you have the real estate to support those five additional units on top of your existing zoning? So, it's a, the TDR, economics of the TDRs are really tricky. So, you do have to do kind of aggressive conservation on the conservation side of the line, and then you've gotta have the receiving zones with enough ability to absorb additional density.
I mean, the other thing you can do is buy the development rights from the farmer, but they need a funding source to do that.
Yeah.
And, you know, our penny money has historically been used to buy environmental lands, not, not buy development rights from farmers.
What has happened, though, is there has been a lot of purchasing by the state of, of development rights from people. So, they can keep their land, but the property will never be developed. And they're not, the state's not buying them to develop. They're just, they're compensating them not to develop their land, and that's the way they do it.
Yeah, I realize that the, the last place I lived at, Lexington, Kentucky, they were doing that. They were taking the tobacco money that was used, that was supposedly advocated or supposed to have been used for medical, but they used, the tobacco industry gave Lexington or Fayette County the money to purchase, basically, development rights from the horse farmers. Of course, most of those farmers were very wealthy to begin with, if you wanna call it farmers, ranchers. The horse and industry, you know?
Right. Yeah, and you've seen that, I think there's, where you've got really high value in that horse farmland, like in Ocala or Loudoun County, Virginia, or other places, you've seen those programs work fairly well.
So, it is done, but I still have a concern about, you know, where is our agriculture industry going? And that's the concern I have.
Well, I think the line, when we start, when we start mapping things, that line between what's suburban development and what's rural is really an important line to draw and to debate. So, you know, that, that goes to the boundaries of your urban service area, the, how much density is allowed on that urban side of the line. You know, if everything gets carved up into one-acre lots, I'm not sure you've got open space and the kind of rural character people wanna preserve. So, those questions are really tricky questions, and I think we'll be getting into that in about a year and a half, probably.
That I was just gonna add, we have had quite a few comments even on, on this topic, but what, what's the new innovative ways we can grow food? Hydroponics, you know, smaller greenhouses, where do we allow smaller units to be able to grow food, too? So, you know, the consideration of those topics also.
Yeah.
I mean.
Well, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I agree with you, I think it'd be nice to come back to this discussion, you know, and have some more of it. But, I do have a couple of comments that popped into my head, if I can. So, you know, just, you know, you're talking about 250,000 people coming, so I don't know what that boils down to student-wise, but if I take a stab, probably 40, 40,000, 40,000 students, so that equates to about 30-plus schools, probably. So, certainly a critical thing we need to be cognizant of. David and I were in a conversation with a developer the other day. I think, I think we've evolved and developed a pretty good process for at least securing school sites and making sure we have capacity, but again, that's just a critical thing we have to be cognizant of and, and intentional about doing. And then, you know, things I've heard, and again, pardon me, I'm not the comp plan expert, some of these probably live in an LDC versus the comp plan, but, you know, I serve on the Dade City Planning Board as well, and, you know, there's concerns about 40-foot lots, and I know Chuck, you've mentioned about landscape. about landscaping and trees and, and, you know, even if you have 40-foot lots, making sure they look halfway decent, and it sounds like some of that, maybe the commission's already maybe addressed to some degree. But just keeping those kind of things at the forefront and putting, if it's in the comp plan or LDC, whatever the case, we just need to kind of be growing the right way and, and in a place that's desirable to live and having appropriate trees and, and look and things like that. You know, I was talking to Jordan Trader right before the meeting, and just, gosh, you know, we just got to be careful about just sheer growth for the sake of sheer growth and, and trying to have some plan, which hopefully that's what the comp plan's for, is to kind of have a plan by which we go about it, so.
Yeah, I think those are all good comments, yeah. I mean, we have, like, what, 20,000 acres of-
Yes.
-preservation land right now.
Right, yeah, yes.
You know, and yet, when, when somebody develops a-
Right.
-a property and builds homes on it, we make them set aside a park.
Yeah.
You know, maybe they should set aside a place for a farm, you know, instead of a park. I mean, those are just things that-
Yeah. Or they, or they pay into a fund, and you conserve-
Right.
-land in your rural areas or something like that. So, sort of think about how those things relate.
There's so many ideas. I mean, if you, we had time to discuss it, and I think, I think a work session would be a good idea.
Yes.
Because I think we're all very interested in it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll work with Nate and Patty. We'll get work sessions set up.
Okay, that'll be good.
Thank you.
Yeah, somewhere on the beach.
What were those three questions?
Somewhere on the beach.
It was, it was just, like, you know, what's, what's good, what's not so good. So, let me go back. And then, what things can the county do to secure a brighter future?
Yeah.
Not, again, we were just trying to get people started, and we wanted to hear what they had to say about their life in Pasco and what they're concerned.
You got a real problem on your hands now. You got to start it.
Every session we've had has gone at least 15 minutes over time, because people wanted to continue to share their thoughts about the county.
Well, we, we'd appreciate it. I think I speak on behalf of everybody here. I think we appreciate having a, a session. It wouldn't have to be after one of our meetings, as far as I'm concerned. It could be any time.
Could be dedicated, dedicated time.
Right.
Yeah, it could be even in the, well-
Yeah, Chuck likes Saturdays.
I do like Saturdays. The only thing I don't like about them is I'm not working.
But we, we can, in, for, in getting ready for that, we can do excerpts from some of the research that we've done and craft some questions around some deeper topics, so we can-
Okay.
-push the discussion a little further.
Yeah.
Great.
We would like to, you know, continue these throughout the process. You guys are sounding board and are hands-on, a little helpful.
Yeah, that'd be great.
But, you know, we're, we'll be looking for you all to give direction to, so.
We appreciate that, yeah.
Appreciate you being part of the process.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right.
Thank you.
So, having said that-
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, we're going.
Thank you.
Thank you.